We're giving backup legal advice?
Backup? No, don't be backing up. Everything's forward.
That's right.
Forward looking?
There we go. Yeah, we do. Appreciate no hard questions tonight, so...
I can't promise that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Good evening, everyone. We will call the December 3, 2012 City Council Meeting to Order. The first order of business is rule call and determination of quorum. Charlene?
Sasso.
Here.
Nordstrom.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Clayton.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Doyle.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Laurenti.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you for having me here. Father, we just want to thank you, Lord, for the opportunity as free citizens to come together, Father, and look out for the business of our community. And, Father, thank you for those that are willing to serve on this board, Father, and the mayor, as they lead us in the decisions that are to be made, Father. And I just pray that you grant them wisdom and understanding, Father, and the decisions that were made will be the betterment of this community. And, Father, they will always be according to your will. Thank you for those that are here, the concerned citizens, Father, be with them. And, Lord, just bless them all and just thank you, Father, for their continued support of this community here. And for these things I ask in Jesus' name, amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
The next order of business is adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions or changes to tonight's agenda? Any additions or changes? We'll first go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to na- I know I'm walking this on and I want to apologize upfront, but I think it's extremely important in light of more recent events, and I just wanted to add this as an item for discussion on the Elected Officials Code of Conduct. Under, I guess you could put that under Items from Counsel or Alder People, whatever it's listed as.
Elected Officials Code of Conduct Item, we'll call it Item 120A. Do we have any additional items to add to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Clayton and a second by Sasso. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We now have our awards and recognitions, and if Jelaine and Ken Rollman could come up, along with Sable and Hoover? Jelaine, it's an honor to recognize you tonight for your many years of service to our community. We worked together for a while, a long time ago, and we worked together at Vocational Rehabilitation Services here in Rapid City. And in 2004, the year that I started, was the year that you went to New York to get Sable and Hoover. And I think they're both now, what, 56? How old are the dogs now?
Ten.
Ten. How does that work in dog years?
Seventy.
Seventy, seventy, okay. I should have checked into that before I spoke on it. But, anyway, Jelaine has long been a strong advocate for people with disabilities, and she's a dear friend of the community and a dear friend of mine. And she was nominated by her Ward Five council members, Bonnie Peterson and Ron Sasso, for this award tonight. The December 2012 Citizen of the Month is an individual whose second career has been public service to the community. Jelaine Ariant-Rollman is a Certified Senior Rehabilitation Counselor for the State of South Dakota Department of Human Services and Division of the Service to the Blind and Visually Impaired. She grew up in Illinois, the oldest of ten, and settled in South Dakota after marrying Ken, who was a Brailleist. They have one son, William, and two granddaughters, Tessa and Tyler. She completed her BA in history from Black Hill State, thinking she would become an attorney, until she became involved with organizations that advocate for the rights of people with disabilities to go to work and participate in the community.
Prior to finishing her degree, she became a certified instructor through the U.S. Olympic Training Centers for Tai Kwon Do and taught martial arts at her school, JA Wonders Olympic Tai Kwon Do. I'm glad you're standing next to her. She had numerous champion athletes to her credit through the AAU U.S. Olympic Program. She and her husband moved to Gainesville, Florida, where she earned her master's degree from the University of Florida in Rehabilitation Counseling and Mental Health Counseling. After graduation, she became the Director for a Blind Grant through the Division of Blind Services in Florida. However, they missed South Dakota and moved back home. She worked as a Senior Vocational Rehabilitation Counselor for the Division of Rehabilitation Services for eight years and transferred to the sister agency where she now works. She is an Alpha-Eta Society Member, served on the Boards of South Dakota Rehabilitation Association as President, Western Resources for Disabled Independence, the Mayor's Committee on the Employment of People with Disabilities, Division of Rehab Services, and the Division of Service to the Blind and Visually Impaired. She has previously been honored with the NISH Professional Excellence in Rehabilitation Award, the Governor's Public Personnel Award, and, most recently, the Melvin Jones Award through the Lions in 2012. The Melvin Jones Award is the Lions' highest form of recognition to acknowledge an individual's dedication to humanitarian service. Jelaine is also the President of the National Federation of the Blind in Rapid City, Vice President of the National Federation of the Blind of South Dakota, and is the first Vice District Governor-elect through Lions for Five South SW. Thank you, Jelaine, for your dedication to the city of Rapid City. We are proud that you are a member of our community.
I'll read the Executive Proclamation, Rapid City, South Dakota, Office of the Mayor. Whereas, the City of Rapid City has established the Citizen of the Month Award to an individual whose second career has been public service to the community, and whereas, the December Citizen of the Month is awarded to Jelaine Ariant-Rollman, a resident of Rapid City, and whereas, Jelaine has been a member of several committees in Rapid City, including the Mayor's Disability Committee. She has also received the highest honor from the Lions Club Organization, whereas, Jelaine has attempted to better our community by advocating improvements for people with disabilities in Rapid City. Now, therefore, we, Alderman Ron Sasso and Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson of Rapid City, South Dakota, on behalf of Sam Quaker, Mayor of Rapid City, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim Jelaine Ariant-Rollman as the December 2012 Citizen of the Month recipient in recognition for her innovation and leadership and the many contributions she has made to our community. Thank you, Jelaine. And just, Jelaine, and I just, I have to say a couple, couple things about Jelaine. Jelaine is probably one of the most amazing people as far as attitude about abilities over disabilities and has really been a role model for so many people, and she can pretty much probably kick almost anybody's butt in here. So, very impressive. And, and her husband, Ken, has also been an incredible advocate as well, so, so, thank you so much, Jelaine. Thank you.
I am totally, totally honored. I believe in public service. I'm a Lion, we serve. I belong to a lot of organizations because I believe that people with disabilities can work and should work. And, in fact, I get people come into my office, say, "I'm disabled, I can't work," and I tell them, "You have the wrong counselor." If I'm disabled and work, they can work too. And, yes, the bigger they are, the harder they fall. Thank you so much. Thank you for this honor. Thank you.
If Chief Mike Malteverne from the Fire Department and Ed Cromwell from South Dakota National Guard could come up, please?
Good evening. My name's Scott Amos. I'm here tonight on behalf of a DOD volunteer agency called Employer Support of the Garden We're here to make a presentation on behalf of Captain Ed Cromwell. He's the tall one, and John's his son there with the plaque. The, the mission of Employer Support of the Garden Reserve is to increase awareness of the Uniformed Services Employment, Reemployment Rights Act among both service members and employers. We also have trained ombudsmen. If issues come up, we get involved in solving the issues at the lowest possible level. We've also taken on a recent initiative to address the, the serious employment problem among our veterans. As you may have noticed, Governor Dugard last month proclaimed veterans, the importance of veterans getting jobs and things. But our most important role is to recognize outstanding employers, and that's what we're here for tonight. So, Chief Malteverne, according to what I'm reading here, you've really gone above and beyond, supporting not only your service members, but the National Guard in general, working closely with our units, equipment exchanges, training, evolutions, and we certainly appreciate that. On behalf of the TAG, I would like to say thank you, and I think Captain Cromwell has some things to say.
Good afternoon, or good evening. Just like to take a quick moment to honor, allow us to honor Chief Malteverne, the city of Rapid City. This is a big, important deal. Chief, you're, you're a great leader. I just wanted to say that. Want to thank the mayor again, the city council, the veterans out there who have served, I want to thank you. And always, most important, is the, the service members' families that send us out. That's one of the most overlooked things in the country, is the, the family members that stay behind and the things that they, they do to support us. I also wear another uniform, I'm a Rapid City fireman, and I just want to take a quick moment. I did a 19-month deployment, started, I remember it very well, October 3, 2008. I got back home April 15, 2010. While I was overseas, I had great support from the department, emails, family, family members, and I knew, one of the most important things is that when I got back, is that I had a place to come back to, a job. And I, that, I didn't have to worry about those things. So, I want to thank, once again, chief and the city council and, and the citizens of Rapid City. Another great thing, though, that Chief Malteverne does is with, he supports the Golden Coyote Mission. Every year, South Dakota hosts training for hundreds of servicemen that come through here, and specifically, the firefighters that come through here. Chief Malteverne, in a way that you don't notice, he's, he's a leader. You guys don't see it, but we do, in coordinating not only the, the city firemen, but with the soldiers that go overseas. And Chief Malteverne's trained some of these soldiers that, they're currently in Afghanistan and also in Kuwait. I could go on, there are a lot of great things that, that, that the Rapid City Fire Department's doing, but I just thank you for the opportunity to extend that gracious, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We are now in General Public Comment. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. We will first go to Dr. Rebecca Lees, under General Public Comment. Dr. Rebecca?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. And my background is in health and disease prevention, and I am here to speak about a concern I have pertaining to public health and also long-range economic health for our state and community. There is something going on around our country right now called the water wars, and many communities around the country are fighting for their water. And over this last year, many communities have had their water rates double and triple just within less than 12 months. Many communities have entirely lost their water. This is, I think, a very serious concern for us in an arid climate, and with the discussion that's been ensuing lately pertaining to the proposed uranium mining that is being looked at south of here, down in Fall River and Custer County. I wanted to share with you that the Environmental Protection Agency has not accepted ISL in situ leach mining as a guaranteed safe methodology of mining. And as we speak, they are making an effort, the federal government, to greatly regulate that significantly more than what they are right now because of these concerns. Now, this company that is proposing this keeps saying to people, "Trust me, trust me. This is what, we're not going to hurt your water," even up here in Rapid City. In my life, when someone says, "Trust me," red flags go up. Big red flags. This company is a Canadian company that are novitiate in uranium mining. They have never done it before. They're a refrigerator company, and their project director has never mined uranium before. They are nearly bankrupt. Their shares closed today at 10 and 1/2 cents a share. They're a penny stock company on the Toronto Stock Exchange, and they cannot be regulated by our SEC, because I've tried to track down some things, and I was told by the SEC that they can't do anything. So, there's no way to regulate them there that way either. Now, if I were getting heart surgery, I wouldn't want someone to do my surgery that had never done it before. And I would just, you know, there's not very much time here, but I have been studying this for a number of years, and I escaped Western Pennsylvania's toxicity there and the incredible disease and water problems that they have due to coal mining and the morcella shale and the gas and oil. So, I just ask that you really give a lot of study to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Lisa Sissonstein. Lisa?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to come up and introduce myself. For those of you who might not know me, I'm on the agenda to be appointed to the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center. I want to thank you for, for considering me. I'm looking forward to that if everything goes through. I have an, a prior engagement, so I am going to have to leave, but I did want to thank all of you council members and just let you see a face to the name. So, thank you very much for considering, and, and I'm hoping that I can serve the public as well as the city of Rapid City. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, and we'll go to Mark McGregor. Mr. McGregor?
I apologize for the earlier interruption there. Hi. I work for RFD-TV. My name's Mark McGregor. I'm up from Tampa, Florida, along with Penny Gilly, my coworker. RFD-TV is a cable channel, formerly on Knowledgey Cable. As of November 30, Knowledgey informed us that they are taking, or they actually have removed, RFD-TV from their cable system locally. We serve Sioux Falls, Rapid City, the surrounding communities. We are a cable system, a rural cable network, and we've been removed from really the only, a rural cables, we're the only rural cable network on this rural cable system of Knowledgey here in the area. RFD-TV has proudly served this community for over 10 years, and we provide 100% family-friendly programming with a special focus on agriculture, equestrian, the rural lifestyle, music, and We feel that this move by Knowledgey does not represent the community well. Our phones have been ringing off the hooks when people found out that this is going to happen. We're trying to do a grassroots effort here in the community, and we're actually up in Sioux Falls as well. We have staff up there as well, doing the same thing. So, my efforts here, our efforts here today, are to reach out to the community and find support in the community, to reach out to Knowledgey and encourage them to reconsider this decision. Our network serves this community well. We are the number-one network with the 50-plus audience, and obviously, a tremendous network when it comes to the rural lifestyle and agriculture. So, what I was hoping for is to get a council member or council members to bring this up as an agenda item, to be considered by the full council, to pen a letter to Knowledgey expressing discontent over this decision that it does not represent the, the community at large, and that's my reason for being here. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
I have a petition. We, we're actually trying to get names. I'd love to, to send it around if anybody would be, is that okay if I did that? Pass it around?
It is.
Is it okay? We would love to, anybody that would be interested in signing the petition, the more names we have, the better, to let people, let Knowledgey know that this is something that the community does not agree with. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Sir, it'd probably be a better idea if you, if you circulate the petition outside of, of the public, of the public meeting.
Sure. Okay.
We do have a couple of, of council lights, and if the council would like to add this to the agenda, we're legal in finance, you, you may offer a motion to do so. It does take unanimous vote.
I'd like to ask the question first. Did Knowledgey give the reason why they dropped you?
They really didn't, and it's, it's frustrating to us. They, Knowledgey serves urban communities typically, Chicago and Detroit. I don't think they understand the rural community that they purchased when they purchased Knowledgey. I know, WOW, I'm sorry, WOW purchased Knowledgey. WOW serves Detroit, Chicago. They're not as familiar with an urban community like Rapid City and Sioux Falls and the, some of the systems, communities that Knowledgey services, and I don't, I don't think they realize what they've done with this. We are a rural channel in a rural community, the only one in this community, and they're removing it. We are very popular. That's typically when they remove a channel, they may not get that many calls because not many people are watching the channel. But with Knowledgey, with RFD, we are extremely popular, and our phones are ringing off the hooks. People are very upset over this because they don't want it gone. And we are an independent network. We aren't like Disney or ESPN where we can, you know, threaten them and...
If I could, if I could interject, what I'd like to do, Jerry, if we could get a motion to add an Item 120B, and he's come all the way from Florida for this.
I'll make that motion.
Let's have a discussion on this tonight. We have a, a motion and a second to add an Item 120B called RFD-TV.
Yes. I have information.
Any discussion on the motion? This is simply to add this to the agenda as Item 120B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and we'll discuss this further, further later on in the agenda.
I appreciate that very much.
We'll now go to Jeff Shild. Jeff?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jeff Shild, and I am the Chairman of the Rapid City Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I'm here before you tonight due to concerns that I, along with others, have with Mayor Quaker's pending recommendations for board members on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Two of our members, Wes Dorm and Van Lindquist, have reached the end of their current three-year term. Typically, unless there has been some sort of problem, if the individual has properly requested to be reappointed, it has been done. I received a phone call on Friday from Mayor Quaker informing me that he has chosen other individuals to fill these positions. Let me make myself clear. I have no problem with the individuals chosen. I bet they are nice people who would make good board members someday under different circumstances. Turnover happens on our board, and seats will be open. With that said, sacrificing experience and dedication is not the way to fill seats. I made it clear to Mayor Quaker that I am in disagreement with him. He has his reason for making changes. I am here to briefly give my reason on why to keep these two gentlemen on. Wes Dorm served as educator and administrator in our school system for many years. This experience shows in the boardroom. Wes has served on the current layout of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board since its creation in 2004 and was on its predecessor for many years, and has also served as Recreation Director in the past. Wes brings knowledge of history of the parks and how parks and recreation has evolved over the years. Wes brings a plethora of experience pertaining to the golfing community, and has taught me and other board members many things about Meadowbrook and executive golf courses, including past and present concerns. Wes will, Wes will ask to-the-point questions of those appearing before the board, which I very much appreciate. Also, Wes is the opposite of what anyone would phrase as a yes-man, something that is needed on a board. He also routinely volunteers to be on subcommittees and RFP committees, one of which I have served with on him. His dedication to Parks and Rec cannot be questioned. Van Lindquist is a guy who could easily have the title of Mr. Rapid City Parks. He has served the Parks and Recreation Department for many years, and his experience cannot ever nearly be duplicated. He is the only president of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board... He is the only president of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board that we have had in its current state until I took over this past February. Upon my assumption of the chair, he has helped me an unbelievable amount by first providing close guidance and then having the confidence to let me, quote, "be loose and do what I need to do." Van serves, Van served on the committee to hire our first director and then this year, by unanimous choice of the board, again represented us in hiring our current director. Recently, when Friends of the Parks hosted a guest speaker and then a forum discussion, Van was a member of the forum. Van is also very active in reminding people on the history of our park system. He has taken golf course employees and shown them where pre-flood features were. Speaking of the flood, Van is very active in making sure that citizens using our parks along the floodway are reminded of the terrible tragedy that occurred in these areas which led to a transition to parkland. Even the possible denial of, even with the possible denial of reappointment coming up, Van was working on writing up a list of goals and problems the board will face in order to help us move forward in his absence, which I hope will not occur. This is leadership, dedication, experience and vision that you cannot replace with Van and for Wes. I could go on and on, but fortunately, time prohibits that. In the Rapid City Municipal Code, Section 2.89.060, subsection B, it states that members shall be appointed by the common council. Therefore, I am before you tonight as a board member, citizen of Rapid City and a father of a little 18-month-old girl who is now starting to really enjoy what Parks and Rec has to offer, to ask that you reappoint Wes Storm and Van Lindquist to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board when the agenda item comes before you. We are a body that advises you. With the loss of these two, you would be down to one member from our board of seven serving consecutively longer than myself, and I have only been on the board since March of 2011. We especially need this experience in place with the recent hiring of a new director. Please keep experience on the Parks and Recreation Board for both yourselves so you receive good advice and for the citizens of Rapid City. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. And we'll now go to Van Lindquist.
I'm Van Lindquist and I've been for this body many times. I've served on the Parks Advisory Board and its predecessor, the Parks and Rec Subcommittee, since the day each of those bodies were formed. It's been a pleasure. It's been a gratifying experience. I appear before you tonight because I am concerned with the loss of historical perspective that two board members can offer. Doesn't necessarily say that we need to be reappointed, okay? In fact, I've told the mayor I won't serve while he's mayor. What I will do though, is I've made a pledge that I will still offer all the expertise that I have as guidance to the existing board and guidance to the new director. Parks are something that are a vital link in this community and unless you have the background and some understanding as to the historical perspective of a particular project or a particular area, you cannot do justice in trying to bring forward items that will enhance this city. So I would encourage the council to look at the statements of qualifications for the people that applied for this position. And based on that, make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would just echo what Van has said, but I'd just point out again what Jeff said. It's not the mayor's prerogative to appoint to the Parks and Recreation, it's a council. I'd like to see the council make the decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. And we'll now go to Jim Peterson.
Jim Peterson, I live with Bonnie in Ward 5, so I'm well aware of how busy you folks are and how your dance cards fill up and you can't be involved with every single issue. But I think this thing about the water permits and the mining generally at Edgemont is very important and contrary to what was said in the public works, I think it does affect the city. It's the old adage of no man is an island, no city is an island as well. If you look at some of the particulars involved with that operation, as we have and as we feel that our representatives have not, there are a lot of problematic issues. And that's demonstrated by the fact that the normal intervener rate when a water permit becomes before the state board is about four or five, maybe two people. 111 people in organizations stood up against this permit. So the Water Board delayed that consideration from December 5th to March. And I would really encourage the city of Rapid City, although it's too late to be an intervener, to at least express concerns about the operation and the issue of those permits. Just, not to get too much down in the weeds on this, but I want to just make a few points. One is that, there's two permits. One is in the Indian Cara for 4.5 million gallons, billion gallons a year is what it amounts to. Basically, it's twice the amount of water that the city of Rapid City uses for 70,000 people. The company will tell you that they're going to recycle the majority of that water, which is true, but there's still some other problems with that recycling. Additionally, there's a second permit into the Madison Aquifer, which is where we get our water, and that one amounts to about 12% of what we use in Rapid City for this one company. Even though those two aquifers do not communicate, the aquifers are contiguous. I mean, the water we get from our wells is the same water that's down there in Edgemont. And just to give you an idea how that flows, a couple of years ago Perry Ron from Tech and I dropped dye into the Spring Creek where it disappears into the Madison Aquifer and 29 days later it appeared in well number 11 here in town. So there's quite a fast transfer rate in the Madison Aquifer. The rate in the Indian Cara, because the stratus is much, much thicker, is much slower. But regardless, it does migrate. Now, there's a couple of issues here. This company, a foreign company, and let me put this in perspective. As you, a lot of you know, I travel around the world, Southeast Asia, Mexico, all over, doing environmental consulting. And there's kind of some poetic justice here because all over the place, in Ecuador, the Niger Basin, Indonesia, developed nations have come in and trashed the community, trashed the community and left a wasteland. Now, that's what's happening here in the United States, where these foreign companies are coming in and taking our resources and leaving a mess. And they're using our own laws against us. For example, South Dakota law does not protect artesian flow. That means that the artesian wells that the ranchers rely on for water to water their cattle in the winter will dry up and they're not protected. Also, the law says that you will return the aquifer after the conclusion of the mining operations to last use, or the exact wording is to original use suitable for pre-mining use. Bear in mind that the numbers say that the water right over this ore bed, just right over it, is 2,000 parts per billion. 30 parts per billion is what the EPA says is safe for drinking. But you just get out a mile or two and there's ranches that have good potable water. So they can lead this, this thing to 500 parts per minute because it still won't be potable and that water will transfer. So anyway, the point is this. I don't want to get too far out in the weeds, but we need to step up. You have a couple of months to consider this and we'll be, we'd be happy to come and do a presentation to you. We'd be in the Clean Water Alliance to public works or to the entire council and let you know specifically what these issues are so that you can step up and we would encourage you to do that.
Thank you, Jim. And this item is on the agenda tonight, item number 33, and it may be pulled off for further consideration at that time. Would you not have any additional general public comment items? Did I miss anyone? If you could step forward, please. If you wanted to speak on an item on the agenda, you can, is this an item on the agenda or is this a general public comment item?
General public comment.
Okay.
Okay, item number 33. My name is Bruce Ellison. I'm an attorney in Rapid City. I'm also an attorney for the Clean Water Alliance and I'm also a father and a grandfather. And I guess I want to speak in all of those capacities. One of the things that was provided in the handouts on that topic was part of this hydrology study that was done by U.S. Geological Survey. One of the parts that was not given to you as a handout is on page 85. It says, "The highest uranium concentrations in surface water in the Black Hills area generally occurred downstream from the outcrop of the Indian Cara group." Indian Cara group is just to our west of here. Uranium is a potential carcinogen and can be a chemical and a radiological hazard. Why is Power Tech asking you to give a consent here? I ask you to ask that question. If it doesn't affect Rapid City, why is it important that they get your okay? One of the things that also is pointed out in this particular document from USGS is the way the Indian Cara outcrops. This is the first mine proposal in the Southern Hills. There are mine proposals in the Northern Hills just over the border. The plan is to put a regional mill in the Southern Hills, a regional mill in the Northern Hills. We're in between. Many of you may remember, if you're old enough, 30 years ago, there was concentrated uranium exploration in Hermosa because the uranium outcrop belt runs right up Highway 79 through Hermosa, through Rapid City, through Sturgis, through Spearfish. This is the beginning. Power Tech has been contacting ranchers just outside Rapid City about whether they're willing to lease their land for uranium mining. This is a problem that you get to because you decide the future for our community. And I guess one of the things, knowing ranchers in our outlying areas who are re-drilling wells right now at great expense, because although that report that I saw seems to say that this is not too big a deal in terms of drawdown from the Madison, it seems to be that a lot of wells are starting to run dry and the aquifers are to some extent interconnected. This is an industry that always pollutes. Ask yourself, why is it that they have to get a permanent exemption from the requirements of the Safe Drinking Water Act for the entire water body that they're mining? Their first mine proposed is 15 square miles of water, water vertically down, 15 square miles of water is their first application for a permanent exemption from Clean Water Act. Once they shut their pumps off, that water flows down, flow. So I ask you, yes, please put this off. A lot more study is needed. We need to start looking as a community about the effects in the future of what this kind of mining could bring to our region. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you not have any additional speaker request forms under general public comment? We will now move to public comment for items 3 through 53.
Mayor, can I make a comment? There is, as one of the authors of the report that was just referred to, okay? There is a body of knowledge out there within the water community. And as I look at the council, you were not around when all of this was brought to you and discussed, I would encourage the council to get in contact with the USGS, get ahold of Mark Anderson, Dan Driscoll, get ahold of professors at the School of Mines, Perry Ron, Foster Sawyer, people that worked on the report, to be able to build up your knowledge base so that you make a very intelligent decision regarding this issue.
Thank you. Anyone else under general public comment items? Seeing none, we'll move to public comment for items 3 through 53. Can we have a motion to open public comment?
Second.
A motion by Lewis and a second by Robert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on items 3 through 53. We have a number of speaker request forms for item 32 and we'll start with Dan McIntyre. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Dan McIntyre. I'm a Wildwood resident. Item 32 pertains specifically to our neighborhood. A while back, there was a plan to put an access road in from the Red Rocks area down through our neighborhood into Sheridan Lake Road. That was denied as they found that the section line had been vacated, so there is no public right-of-way. Item 32 that has been raised here seems to try to sidestep that ruling by the Supreme Court in that it'll, it'll name that road all one common name, which will give the effect that there actually is a road there. There's really no purpose for a road because most of the traffic could just go down Sheridan Lake Road instead of cutting through Wildwood to get to Sheridan Lake Road. I really don't see the point. Anyways, the point is, I and my family are opposed to this because we feel that it is a backdoor attempt to try to get an access road through there for development. Thank you.
And we'll now go to Chris Haas, also on item 32. Chris?
Hi, I'm Chris Haas. I'm also a resident in Wildwood and I just wanted to go down and sing, I'm Against Renaming the Street. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we'll now go to John Spangler, also on item 32. John?
Mayor, councilmembers, I'm John Spangler. I'm a resident of the Wildwood Association, I'm a resident there in Wildwood and recently elected to the Board of Directors and I'm here tonight in that capacity. Because of the rather short notice that we had of this, it's fallen to me to be sure that my fellow residents were apprised of all of the ongoings regarding this and also to be sure that our Wildwood Association is adequately represented. And I think we've accomplished both. In my discussions with the Wildwood residents, they are overwhelmingly opposed to the renaming and we took this to the planning board where it was, as I recall, voted down unanimously. I think they, I think everybody perceives this as a, as an attempt to reopen the issue which many, many years ago was litigated, both in the federal district court and in the South Dakota Supreme Court. And that area was ruled to be a private access only, so that the, any road placed through there would have no outlet. Even if that obstacle were overcome, the roads that those areas would drain through, i.e. the east end of the south loop of Wildwood, is a very steep road that does not meet grade requirements, doesn't meet code, and Unidel Drive is narrow, twisty, same issues. The city would have a difficult time addressing, increasing the traffic there. Those roads really don't meet the needs of the residents there now, particularly in the winter, particularly the Wildwood steep portion is frankly dangerous. I personally have slid twice right out into the middle of Sheridan Lake Road on an icy day coming down that steep portion. Somebody's going to get badly injured or killed there. This would only compound that issue if we increased the number of homes and people draining through there. There's adequate access for any developer, including Mr. Hamm and others who might wish to have traffic go through that area. There's plenty of access to Sheridan Lake Road by other avenues other than through our backyards and into a set of roads that are not equipped and were never designed to handle this kind of traffic. I'm going to quit early because I think other residents have even more important things to say.
Thank you. And next we'll go to Mitch Susarsky.
Hi, my name's Mitch Susarsky and I live at 5563 Wildwood Drive with my family and myself and my wife were also opposed to the renaming of the street. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Rick Belsas. Rick? Good evening.
Thank you and good evening. My name's Rick Belsas and I live at 5980 Wildwood Drive and I'm just rising in opposition to the name change. Thank you.
And next we'll go to Harley Taylor. Harley?
Good evening. I'm not sure this is the proper order and I should be speaking now, but I will give you my viewpoints and perhaps I'll have the opportunity to answer the questions that may arise later. But my family, through the family corporation, owns about two-thirds of Shooting Star Trail. And Shooting Star Trail enters our property between section 21 and 28 and proceeds north. Interesting, but probably not of great significance, but just kind of interesting to me, that name Shooting Star came from Mr. Hamm. We needed to rename that road for the fact that my daughter and her husband, Dr. Lynn Ackridge, and Lynn is present here tonight, were building a new home there and they needed an address. So we tried to come up with some names and finally I went to Leo Hamm. So we tried to come up with some names, and finally I went to Leo Hamm and asked him what he thought. Well, he didn't like any of the ones we'd suggested, but he said, let me think about it. Couple days later, he came back and he said, our family thinks that because the hill at the end of your property where the trail will end has the largest concentration of shooting star flowers of any place on the Hamm Ranch. And this portion that I own used to be part of the Hamm Ranch. And the shooting star flower, the beautiful long-stemmed purple and whole flower that blooms in the spring, that's just a sidelight. A big issue to me tonight, we were not contacted by Mr. Hamm at any time regarding this name change. I would like to know what the purpose is, why the name changed, and why we were not Mr. Hamm alone probably can answer that better than anyone else. But I, you've probably already surmised, I'm strongly opposed to changing the name at the present time. I would like to address questions that may arise later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Harley. And next we'll go to Leo Hamm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I came upon this situation quite out of necessity in regard to a sale that will happen the 18th of this month, which is an effort to settle an estate of my mother's. I am her personal representative and et cetera. I wanted to know if the, what I perceived to be the extension of Carriage Hills went through her property. That was my prime reason for coming to City Hall some time back. And the maps keep changing. You can't believe the numbers of differing maps that I have witnessed coming out of the city in regard to our bailiwick and the future that some of the city planners and et cetera had in mind over the years. Now, the situation that I find myself in back when this litigation happened was a situation that I did not create, I did not ask for, and I had no real part in the development of the problems that occurred with that situation. But the city of Rapid City, dag gone well did, and I got stuck as being the SOB of the whole dang deal, and I didn't have anything to do with it. Now, these people from Wildwood have no idea really of what transpired to bring about that suit in the first place. But it goes back to the fault of the plat that was approved by Rapid City in the inception when my brother Ted sold that property. At that time, he still owned the property that the Taylors have. And the city planners did not provide for access through the Wildwood property. It is unknown to a lot of people, but the first development that was there was called Unidel. There's still a street there that runs between the two Wildwoods now that is Unidel. That was the first development, some fifteen or twenty years prior to the development of Wildwood. If the attitude of the people in Unidel had been the same or was the same as it is now in Wildwood, Wildwood would not have existed. If we, as pretty plain rancher-type folks, had realized the difference totally between an easement and a right-of-way, Red Rocks, or not Red Rocks, but Wildwood would not exist today. Now, if any of you studied that plat, you will see that the city generated the double-fronting situation that exists there that was used against us in court. If they look at the Lot 23, which is the contentious one, it was put, a house was allowed there by the city on an unbuildable lot. Lot 24 is also in violation of the city ordinances and in violation not only that but of the plat of Wildwood. The plat of Wildwood calls for a 25-foot setback front and rear. That's impossible to do on 23. It probably wasn't impossible on 24, but the builder of that...
Mr. Hamm?
Am I going too far, too long?
When we get to this item, if it's pulled off of consent, there'll probably be an opportunity for councilmembers to ask you questions, but at this point, the public comment period for you is over.
I feared, hopefully, that they would delay this thing until... It's listed on your maps now as a study area. I thought there was going to be a recommendation tonight to postpone this till a future date. On that map, it talks about a study area.
Thank you, Mr. Hamm.
Why don't you wait till after that study area? It gets complete before you kick this down.
Next we'll go to Roger Wilson, also on item thirty-two.
Mayor and City Council people, I've been, I lived at 6050 Alpine Court, which is in Wildwood. Wildwood was developed in 1980, and Mr. Hamm's family sold the land that is now Wildwood, but it was not part of the city. So the plating that the city has for certain developments may not have been in effect at the time. However, on this particular issue of a road, renaming the road, it's our concern as Wildwood residents that if that name is changed, we're going to have traffic right in several people's backyard. That's really inconsistent with what the needs are for our development and for Red Rocks. So I'm adamantly opposed. Thank you.
George Beal.
My name is George Beal, and I also live in the Wildwood subdivision, and I have lived there since 1985, and I'm thoroughly familiar with it. We seem to get back to talking about old litigation, and that is two lawsuits that went to the Supreme Court of South Dakota. And the Supreme Court handed their opinion down in August of 2003. So the Wildwood people are very much opposed to having any access to streets through it that serve the outside area out of Wildwood. As a matter of fact, it's prohibited in the restrictive covenants that any lot can be plotted or replatted or ain't-track plotted to give access to the outside areas or land outside of the Wildwood subdivision. There is no need for this through the litigation, and Hamm was very much involved in this. As a matter of fact, the trial court and the Supreme Court of South Dakota in that litigation held that the city acted in bad faith in trying to condemn a right-of-way through the Finn property, which is that lot that we're talking about. And Mr. Hamm, if anybody thinks that he wasn't involved, all you have to do is read the Supreme Court decision. There's no need for it. In the litigation, the Supreme Court upheld, the trial court, that the easement through the Finn lot to get from the section line to Wildwood was a private easement and not a public easement, and it pertained and was in the benefit of Mr. Taylor's family and his immediate members of the family, and Mr. Hamm and his immediate members of the family. So they have private access rights to this property they own. It's no need, there's no need to change the name, and if you change the name, you're then going to have people entering upon the section line to the west from the extension of Dunsmore Road into this property and out to Sheridan Lake Drive. And if and when they do that, they're going to cross the Finn property where the last hundred feet of it is private property only, and they are trespassing upon the Finn property, and the city would be aiding in that if they did approve the name change. So therefore, I ask that you not change the name.
Thank you. And we'll go to Lynn Eckridge.
Mayor Quaker and City Council people and officials, my name is Lynn Eckridge, and I reside at 5511 Shooting Star Trail. I live in the only home which is built on Shooting Star Trail. So you can about imagine the impact that this will have on me to have to go through the hassles of an address change, renaming the ranch land which our family owns, which is called Shooting Star Trail, or Shooting Star Ranch. I'd like to describe a little bit about the road, which is called Shooting Star. It's a section line. It starts at the intersection of Unidel and Wildwood. It's basically a gravel road, very narrow, and we follow this gravel road to the very top of a hill. It's a very steep incline. Then we veer off to the right, to the north, and this gravel road leads directly to my home. It's nothing more than a gravel road. Coming back down to exit from my house, coming down Shooting Star Trail, it can be very, very slippery in the winter, and it feeds into Unidel and Wildwood Drive, as Dr. Spangler said, which is very dangerous in the winter. It's a very narrow road. Many of us have slipped on that road in the winter months. This gravel road is maintained, or this section line is maintained by our family, primarily my husband. We provide the gravel for this section line, the grading of it, and all the snow removal in the wintertime. The road is used and enjoyed by many of our Wildwood neighbors here. It backs up to Wildwood Homes. Children play in that area. We have a lot of walkers. People enjoy walking their dogs on this section line. By no means would this road ever support more than that. It's a very steep incline, and it feeds into an equally dangerous, steep exit out onto Sheridan Lake Road. So again, we were not informed by our neighbor for the reason for this, and all I can personally say is that my inconvenience is someone else's unidentified gain. Thank you.
Bob Hoover.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Bob Hoover. My wife and I live at 6010 Vanishing Trail Court in Wildwood. We've lived there since 1983, when we built our home. We are very opposed to the renaming that has been requested. It appears to me that this is nothing more than a thinly veiled attempt to ultimately connect Wildwood to Red Rocks and to other areas of land that could be developed. I would encourage each council person that might even consider this to come up to Wildwood, look at Shooting Star Trail, look at the section line, look at where that traffic is going to come out into Wildwood, and look at the roads that it would come onto. A lot of that traffic would run immediately behind our home, and I can tell you that that street is in no condition to have a lot of additional traffic on it. We're just asking for either a lot of development of that road, which is going to take away from our lots, or we're asking for a lot of additional accidents that are just not needed in that area. Therefore, my wife and I are very opposed to renaming this. Individuals and government sometimes have different memory. Anybody that hasn't looked into the history of this should look into the history of it. Eleven years ago, when this was litigated, you know, Wildwood prevailed in federal district court. That wasn't good enough for the city. City took us on to the state Supreme Court, and we prevailed there. I have no desire to run down this trail again, but I guess in the end, that'll probably be more up to the city than it is to Wildwood residents. Thank you very much.
And next we'll go to Susan Weedemeyer.
Hello, my name is Susan Weedemeyer. My husband Brian and I live at 5568 Wildwood Drive. We are both very opposed to having this renaming done. A week ago, we had a car roll in our front yard. I can only imagine what more traffic would bring. There's not sidewalks. The other side of Wildwood doesn't even have curb and gutter. It's just not appropriate at this time to add more traffic into that area if it couldn't sustain it. If you want to come look, it just is not a good decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we'll go to Dave Davis on item thirty-four.
Mayor, council, thank you. I'm here on item thirty-four in opposition to the confirmation. It's nothing personal. It's not that I'm opposed to the individual the mayor has appointed, but because of the unique perspective that I bring, I want to share a little history with you. I spent three terms on the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center Board. I was appointed by three different mayors and confirmed by three separate councils. I've got a little bit of experience, and I've lived through some of the highs and lows that come to play with that particular board. There are five members on that board. They serve three-year terms. They can't serve more than two consecutive terms. There's a reason for that. It gives consistency. It allows people to be there long enough that they learn what they're doing. They're not all rookies. On the other hand, two consecutive three-year terms at the end of six years, a person is required to step aside so that they don't take ownership of that board or that particular civic center either. It was well thought out. It's worked well for nearly forty years. That board deals with some very complex issues. It's one of the largest enterprise funds in town. Certainly, more people go through that door than any other treadway in this city. The learning curve is very, very steep. Historically, at least as long as I can remember of being involved with it for the last fifteen years, there's always been an attorney on that Board of Directors. There's a reason that there's always been an attorney. Quite frankly, they gave us direction. They prevented us quite often from making mistakes before the mistakes were made. It makes no common sense, makes no sense to me whatsoever, why this mayor would not reappoint an attorney that is serving his first term to his second available and legal term. Unless that attorney, that individual, has done something seriously wrong, I see no reason whatsoever why you would step aside and lose that historical knowledge, not to mention the fact that it's the only attorney on that board. I might add that the appointee that's been brought forward is not an attorney, so it's not as though we're replacing with one. I see no reason whatsoever why you would want to fire Rich Huffman midway through this dream. To me, it looks very foolish to throw out all the experience and expertise that the incumbent brings to play, especially at such a critical time as what the civic center faces. It looks to me like it's simply there to perpetuate a political agenda, and that concerns me. I ask you all if you would vote against this confirmation. Once again, not because I have something against the appointee, but simply because it makes sense. I would hope that you vote against it, and I would hope that you move forward and advise and certainly encourage the mayor to reappoint Mr. Huffman to this position. And Sam, just on a personal note, long ago, your dad shared with me your favorite book, Team of Rivals. There's a lot to learn from Mr. Lincoln. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. We do not have any further speaker request forms on items three through fifty-three. Did I miss anyone?
I'm really not.
Seeing none, can we have a motion to close public comment?
Some minutes.
We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public comment on three through fifty-three is closed. Anyone like to remove items three through fifty-three for a separate consideration? Please hit your light. We'll first go to Amanda Scott. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remove items number twenty-two, item number twenty-eight, item number thirty-four, item number thirty-seven, item number forty-four, item number forty-six, item number forty-eight.
Okay, we have twenty-two, twenty-eight, thirty- Okay, we have 22, 28, 34, 37, 44, 46, 48. We'll go to Bill Clayton. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull 29 and 30 along, along with 28. Thank you.
29 and 30. Jerry Wright?
Item 32.
Item 32. Bonnie Peterson?
33.
33. Seeing no additional lights, we have a motion to approve the balance of consent with the...
Second.
We have a motion by Robertson, a second by Lewis.
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we are on item number 22. Jerry Wright, can you read this on the record for us?
Item 22 is to authorize the American Finance Officer to sign the resolution number 2012-132, construction fee resolution for 12th Street Alley Cemetery Astoria Project. Did I read that right?
You did.
I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. Do we have a motion? Amanda, we'll go to you.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve. I'd like to retain the floor.
Okay, we have a motion by Scott and a second by Peterson. Amanda, go ahead.
Thank you. This is, I just wanted to bring to the public's awareness that this is being constructed and that the city is picking up 70% of the tab of this project. The remaining 30% will be split. There are four parcels being affected by this. The four parcels will actually be paying the remaining 30% only as they tap in. So I thought the public should be aware that this is a, in my opinion, a joint effort where the city is actually doing their due diligence and picking up 70%. I yield the floor.
Any further discussion? Motion is for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 28. Jerry?
Item 28 is to approve the revised deer management plan. I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. Do we have any lights or a motion? Amanda?
I'd like to ask some questions of Lon, if it's possible. Lon, I saw you out there earlier.
Lon Vandusen, Parks Division Manager.
Hi, Lon. In reading this revised deer management plan, one of the questions I have is, I had asked for the information about the number of harvested deer and how they were distributed before, and you provided me that information. And it appears as if there was really never a problem with having the carcasses utilized in a positive benefit. Am I reading this correctly, or was there a problem?
No, there was no problem distributing the harvested deer.
Then, my question is, is now in the revised plan, it appears as if the number one organization that is going to be the recipient of all the carcasses, as long as they can come up with a processing fee for them, is the South Dakota Sportsman Against Hunger. Is that correct?
The Sportsman Against Hunger will be paying for the processing of the deer through a couple of different processing plants, yes, if that's your question.
It is.
Sportsman Against Hunger themselves will not be processing the deer.
Right, so they'll be paying for the processing. How is the determination of the distribution of the meat going to be handled?
Through the food bank.
Okay, so the food bank will be the recipient of all the carcasses, as long as a processing fee from the South Dakota Sportsman Against Hunger organization can process them?
Yes.
And if they do not have the processing money, what happens to the remaining harvested deer?
That's a good question. I, I don't know. We will likely go back and distribute them the way they were handled before on a first come, first served basis.
The reason I'm bringing it up, Lon, is I've got some citizens in my ward that have contacted me regarding this. They are some of the recipients of the harvested deer in the past, and I know that we want to make sure that the meat is being utilized to the benefit and not wasted. But I've got some citizens in my ward that actually were recipients of the harvested deer, and whether they, you know, love venison, or it was filling their freezer, because if they didn't even have to pay for the processing fee, they processed it themselves. And so it was already going, in my opinion, to a needy source. And so I've got some concerned citizens that they are no longer available, according to the revised section of the program, to be a recipient of one of these harvested deer. And then I've also had citizens in my ward that are disabled veterans, and they are disabled, no longer able to hunt venison themselves, but they also were recipients of some of these deer carcasses so that they could at least enjoy what they prefer, which was venison, and it was one of their ways of getting venison again. So I guess I'm kind of putting you on the lot, on the spot, Lon, but is there a way to re-modify this, or do we need this like right now? Or can we kind of redistribute that so that at least there's some opportunity for distribution? Or is there another way for these recipients to be put on a list, like through Game Fish and Parks or some other organization, or even on the same list to the food bank? Is there some, I mean, what would you recommend to address maybe some of these issues?
Well, first of all, I would say that right now, I think time is of the essence that we get started on our program for various reasons. You know, I, I can't really outline the biological reasons, but you know, right now, the deer are, are grouping together, and once they, you know, for, I don't want to say mating purposes, and once they disperse, they're going to be more difficult to harvest because of that. But I certainly would think that the Urban Wildlife Committee, which has spent a lot of time preparing this plan, would certainly reconsider the process of distributing the, the deer meat certainly in the, in the future. And I cannot speak for Game Fish and Parks, but I know that they have asked in the past for our list of people that have received carcasses that did not, or were not able to get them through our program. Game Fish and Parks has in the past been able to provide carcasses through programs that, that they operate.
Well, I currently have some residents in my ward that have been calling to be put on the list, and that's how it came to their attention, because they're being told there is no list. So they, they don't know where to go in order to have their name recorded at this point.
Certainly. And there's been a lot of people that have really benefited from that distribution of the deer in our community for various reasons. You're absolutely correct. It's, it's a, it's a wonderful program.
I'll yield the floor for now.
Thank you, Amanda. We'll go to Bill Clayton. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the new plan, and I'd like to hold the floor.
We have a motion by Clayton and a second by Peterson, and you have the floor.
Lon, do me a favor and stay there, and I'm going to try my best to bail you out here and, and answer some of Amanda's questions, because they're good questions. There's no doubt that as the city has removed deer from the urban environment, and we've provided those carcasses to people who were willing to take them and endure the, the cost or the, the work of processing them themselves, one of the things that the city has, I think rightfully so, just shied away from, is trying to do any sort of means verification. What we have now is Sportsman Against Hunger who have stepped up. They, in fact, raised the funds. They will pay for all these deer to be professionally processed. One of the things that perhaps many people in the town don't know is, is we have places like the Mission, the Food Bank. None of those places can legally, and therefore cannot, take deer when they're whole. It has to be cut, packaged, frozen, and it's the only way they can take it for distribution to truly needy people. So Sportsman Against Hunger came and met with our group, and I sit, I might, might as well say that, I, I sit on the Urban Wildlife Committee. Some of those members are here tonight, and I'd like to introduce them later. And all of that meat, all of it, will in fact be going to these agencies where means verification is done. So what we have is truly people in need who would be the recipients of that meat, rather than someone perhaps of means who, for whatever reasons, can't hunt, doesn't hunt, whatever. And I would suggest, as a means wanted to get you off the hook here, there are those of us who do hunt. I do not like venison, but I sure like to hunt, and my wife is now a hunter, and we give our deer away. And I look for people every year to find somebody who wants to take those deer that I take. So there's always a means, and it's a matter sometimes of stepping forward. So maybe it won't be as easy anymore, because we won't have 200 or 300 deer that the city is giving away, because they're going to go to these truly needy people. But I would suggest for those folks who may not be needy, you know, who have means, it's, they're there for the asking, and, and they're certainly available. Did I, did I miss anything perhaps in the questions you, you asked?
Just that I understand that it's going to needy people, but one of the things is, I've got a lot of people in my ward as well that would fall into that same category. So it's one of, you know, if there's other outlets for them, that's why I was asking about Game Fish and Parks or your personal phone number, so they can call.
I'm in the book. Can't hide, I'm in the book.
But there are quite a few. So, you know, basically what I was looking at is if we have a harvest of 200, which is what, what it is this year, is there a proportion that, you know, 150 can be designated if the processing fees come up, but leave 50 available for the sign-up sheet, you know? And because it's always been, from what I understand, is they sign up and their name is called, they either take it then, or they're moved on, and they go right to the next one. So, you know, it's a pretty immediate need, and it seems to have worked for years. So it's just in order to satisfy, you know, not only the, the needy citizens that were processing the deer themselves that could still be on the list, as well as the veterans who were using this as an opportunity to get venison that they can no longer appropriate themselves, and then also be able to donate to the South Dakota Sportsman Against Hunger for the processing to the needy places, as you've mentioned. So it just seems to me...
If I may, it's just that, once again, we would be thrust into a position as a city to determine needs, who comes first in line. We've only got so many. The, the city has never had a problem giving away 300 deer. So if we take that number and now diminish it, let's say to 50 out of, out of the 200, so 150 go to Sportsman Against Hunger, and we've got 50 left, how do we determine who is more eligible than somebody else? And it just gets us out of that precarious place. I would suggest, however, that anybody who is, who would meet the requirements, unfortunately, they'll have to do some paperwork, but the deer is still available to those people who truly need or deserve it the most. I'm trying to be politically correct here. So I, I, it's one of the places that we as a committee, if my committee members are here, because I know some people slipped up or slipped in, if you don't mind standing up, I see Shirley, I saw Jim, Wes works with us as well, just stand up for a moment. Thank you. And it was one of the places we were most excited about, because in the past, we, we were out as a city removing deer and giving them out as best we could, but some people were pulling up in nice new trucks, and there were other people who don't read the paper, who didn't have a means, and they were being left out. So we finally are taking the meat. It's all being processed. As a matter of fact, there's no steaks, there's no roast, it's all ground up into burger, because that's how it goes the farthest, and that's what it's going to be turned into is venison burger for the truly needy people of our community. And another interesting point is that it stays in the community. Let me yield the floor, because I'm taking too much time. Thank you.
Oh, can I pause just one?
Come back to you in just a minute. We'll go to Ron, and then we'll come, come to you, Amanda. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to say, I support the motion as it currently is, leaving, leaving it without making any changes to what is, what has been put forward for those changes. The, you know, Sportsman Against Hunger, they are a nonprofit, 501(c)(3), and it appears last year, though they had fewer deer harvested across South Dakota, they still were able to harvest and process and distribute almost 2,000 deer. So I would assume that they should be able to handle what Rapid City has to offer. I do, I agree with Alderman Clayton that in looking at trying to get the, the venison to the people who would need, need it the most, makes the most sense. And so I support that. Thank you.
I'll go to Amanda Scott.
So I was just going to clarify, Bill, if you don't mind. When you say that they can, it may take some paperwork, but they could still apply to the South Dakota, so it's not just the organizations that will be receiving the, the processed deer? Individual citizens can apply to the South Dakota? Sportsman Against Hunger?
Individual citizens who are in need.
Right, so they can apply directly to them?
Absolutely, and, and I'd be happy to work with you. And if anybody has any questions, I hate to volunteer myself, because I'm spread pretty thin, but Dr. Jeff Olson is the representative who came to, to visit with us, and he certainly knows all the ins and outs and the whys and the wherefores, and I'd be happy to provide that information so that the door is open to those people who would qualify.
Well, I just think if, if that's available, then if that information of how they contact or including that contact information on the Parks and Rec site, then the people that are currently trying to sign up as to the old way, they would now have someplace else that they could at least call and sign up to receive this. Am I understanding that correctly?
Let me clarify two points, and, and I'll, I'll get with Dr. Olson, and I think they could probably do that through the Sportsman Against Hunger website, number one. And then one of the things that needs to be said is, we, we talked about Game Fish and Parks. Game Fish and Parks is a body that legislates things, so they, they don't get involved in the, the taking of the deer, the distribution, distribution of the deer. So really, they're, they're the lawmakers and the law enforcement end of that, and in no way, other than a little bit of oversight, not really involved at all in the, in the city deer program. And they've done a real good job, I think, of drawing that line so that it, it doesn't get muddy. But I'm happy to provide any, any information I can.
Well, no, I'm just thinking, as long as the contact information for the South Dakota Sportsman Against Hunger is provided on the Parks and Rec site, then the other 300 individuals in the past that have signed up and received a carcass can at least contact them and find out what the requirements are.
Lon, why don't we do this? Why don't you bring, bring forward an update to the next public works meeting regarding the, the deer distribution? These are excellent questions, and I think we can answer that in the next meeting.
Very good. I think we'd have to ask them if they would like to have their information on our website. Probably would, but we will certainly ask. Very good suggestion.
Do you have a plan on adding this to the next public works meeting?
Yes.
Under your items? Very good.
Just as a note, Mr. Mayor, in the appendices of the plan, the Sportsman Against Hunger site is listed there as, as one of the pertinent organizations that's involved with us.
Very good. The motion on the floor is to approve...
I'm sorry, Mayor, can I?
Yeah.
And just following up, Lon, so also in the plan, as far as, and you know me, I'm going to ask about costs. As far as the cost associated with this, it says it will be approved by the budget, or was it already provided for in the budget? Has that changed at all for 2012?
That's correct. We have provided for this program in our budget for this year.
All right, thank you. I'll yield the floor.
I'll go to Chad Lewis.
Call the question.
Question's been called. Are there any objections? We have no objections. The motion on the floor is to approve item number 28. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 29. Jerry?
Item 29 is to approve the deer harvest recommendation of 200 deer for the 2012-2013 season in the interest of expedience. I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Wright and a second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 30, Jerry?
Item 30 is to acknowledge the report on the skunk issues in the community. For that one, I do yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. Chad Lewis?
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge the report, and we'll go to Bill Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And before I forget, we saw our two people out here, and I'd just like to introduce them. Jim Good, Chairman of the Urban Wildlife Committee. Jim, if you don't mind standing up, and I won't recite your resume, but a long history of wildlife biology. And Shirley Frederick, wherever you are, my editor-in-chief, retired English teacher from the Rapid City School System, and she keeps me honest with periods and question marks and quotation marks. Thank you, Shirley.
What I'd like to do, Mayor, is just read two paragraphs out of this letter. Basically, this had come from your office, asking for us as the Urban Wildlife Committee to address the recent skunk problem here in town. And let me just read these paragraphs here. "Our committee is aware that many complaint telephone calls come into a variety of city, county, and state offices requesting aid in dealing with wild animal problems. Currently, Rapid City has no specific ways to deal with these problems. There is no individual nor single office in Rapid City which deals with the problems. Various agencies, including the Rapid City Police Department, South Dakota Game Fish and Parks Department, South Dakota Highway Patrol, Pennington County Sheriff's Department, Rapid City Parks and Recreation Department, and previously the County Extension Service, have dealt with wildlife disturbance calls. Disturbance and damage by skunks and other wildlife species will no doubt continue. In that there is no distinct protocol for handling these problems, no one agency has taken a lead in this area. People with complaints feel that, feel like, no one cares about their wildlife problems. It's a situation Rapid City has an obligation to remedy. With the establishment of the new city wildlife hotline at Parks and Rec, phone number 791-4945, these problems will be directed to one office where data is now being collected to determine the number and nature of wildlife problems. The recording on the hotline directs callers to 911 or Game Fish and Parks if they have a problem where a person or domestic animal is in danger from a wild animal. Because of the continued and growing need to handle wild animal disturbances in a timely manner, our committee recommends that the city consider creating and filling a position," and we have a question mark for a title, "Wildlife Enforcement Officer," "to be the initial contact for handling slash coordinating actions in these situations."
So one of the things that we, as a committee, will be working on is further recommendations and a request of the city to initiate such a program and a position, so that we can better serve the constituents in terms of wildlife problems.
Thank you, Bill. We'll go to Ron Sasso. Ron?
Just as a piece of information, myself and Chief Allender have been working with the Humane Society of the Black Hills, and one of the things, we're in the process of working with the contract and looking at trying to address some of these specific needs as far as wildlife, wild animals, including skunks. So we are in the process of working on that and hope to have something probably early part of 2013. So, thank you.
Seeing no further lights, the motion is to acknowledge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 32, Jerry.
Item 32 is a resolution for a road name change from Poppy Trail to Shooting Star Trail, for property generally described as being located east of the current northern terminus of Dunsborough Road and the western terminus of Shooting Star Trail. And if I may speak to that issue, if someone will make a motion, I have some comments I'd like to make.
Go ahead and make a motion.
I make a motion that the denial be granted, but that we send back, as a council, to our staff and planning commission, and anyone that's appropriately involved, to resolve the issues that these people are concerned about. And I have some comments related to that, if I may.
So your motion is to approve the denial?
Correct.
And to deny the request and ask for planning commission?
To refer this issue back to our city staff, our planning commission, our public work staff, and any and/or all parties that would have an impact on this to resolve this issue. And let me explain, if I might.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Jerry, you have the floor.
Thank you. I think that the residents of Wildwood deserve that this potential threat they perceive, ever since this lawsuit of about, what, 10, 15 years ago, was resolved and it resurfaces. I think Mr. Hamm deserves a better answer than he has received, and there's a tremendous amount of confusion out there related to this issue. I went back and looked at the plat from 1977, and looked at the work that was done, and I know most of the people that were involved. And these are the early stages of Rapid City being involved with actually what I would call serious planning. It's post 72, post flood, the early stages of when we obtained the three-mile jurisdiction and so forth. There are probably some mistakes made. In my opinion, when I look at the plat as filed through Wildwood, the worst mistakes made, in my opinion. For instance, the access or the center line, excuse me, the section line right-of-way was not vacated coming down that hill. And yet, a good significant amount of the lots that were platted had double frontage upon the Wildwood Road and the Centerline Road, and I drove that yesterday, and I was shocked to find, and apologize, I'd never been up in that particular area sooner, houses that appeared to be, the property line or fences were right at the right-of-way line, or the house was near the right-of-way line. I think that's not a good deal. I think that the rename of Poppy or Shooting Star is not going to resolve the issues that are concerned by these people or expressed by these people. I think we need to take a serious look at how we want development to occur in this area, how we're going to provide proper and safe access to the areas above Wildwood without impacting Wildwood in a negative way. I agree that that section line road is not a good route for a throughway. I don't think it should ever have been considered as a throughway. I think it's okay for a single ranch or a person to get in on, but I think we can do better than we have. So I think that the epitome of what's happened in the past is that, my understanding is, is why was this road Shooting Star, and why was it the other end Poppy, I was told, was staff, and I won't mention names, call it Poppy Lane, so we don't want to draw attention to Shooting Star. Didn't solve any problems. Section line roads, especially in this terrain in this country, in the Black Hills, especially Rapid City, normally are not good routes. Never have been. Probably very, very few places where they are. So I think we need to take action to provide access, as I said earlier, to the area above Wildwood, not cutting through Wildwood. There's ways to do it. There's a major street plan that shows access across Carriage Hills into Sheridan Lake Road, and it doesn't impact the terrain. It'll provide, I think, marketability and development access for the property if they wish it. I just think we need to sit down as a community and resolve the issues once and for all. Take this fear that the Wildwood residents have of this thing's coming back every five to 10 years, solve the problem. Give them security, give the owners in the area security. Let's develop a plan so we know where we're going. And that's all I ask. I think we, I know we can do it.
Thank you, Jerry. I'm going to make a recommendation as a chair before we continue, and that is, is that we divide the question. We have, we have two, we basically have two motions in one, and if there's no objections, I'd like to divide the question. If there's an objection...
To a denial to the name, and then to...
Right.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
Anybody have any objections to dividing the question? Okay, we're going to, we're going to first address the issue of the denial. The motion is to deny the request for the renaming. Please remove yourself from the queue if you do not want to speak on the renaming. We'll go to Ron Sasso.
Sorry, I was just going to remove myself from that. I was a little slow as I was originally thinking of putting a substitute motion, but you divided that, so that works fine. So, sorry about that.
Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would just like to say thank you to all the residents of Wildwood for showing up tonight and expressing your concerns, and thank you to Mr. Hamm, evidently he's left the room. But I think it's very important that we listen to the neighborhood. They're very much opposed of this, and so I would definitely want to support the denial of this and ensure that that area is one of those unique areas in Rapid City, much like Chapel Valley, that you still feel like you're in the woods, but you're actually still in the city. So I think it's very important we protect those, and I say that as a developer, folks. So I think it's very important that we make sure we listen to the folks involved in this. And while I do appreciate developers' rights as well, more than most, I just think this is one of those unique situations. We want to make sure we try to do the right thing by the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. The motion is to deny the resolution for road name change. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and the road name change is denied. We are now to the second part, or the second motion, which is to ask staff to explore options relating to this issue, including the access. Jerry, can you restate, did I state that properly? And would you like to give a timeframe? I was thinking maybe the second...
That's the only thing I was going to add, was a timeframe, but in essence, I think that our staff with the planning commission, and it may involve some public meetings, come up with a plan or recommendations to resolve all of the issues that have been expressed by the residents of Wildwood, and the Taylors, and Mr. Hamm, and do the very best we can as a community to solve as many problems as we possibly can. And I would say a report back in, I'd say probably 60 to 90 days. I think it's going to take some time to do it right. I don't think it'd be done in two weeks.
60 days.
60 days would work. I'd say February 1st, I don't worry about.
How about the first Public Works meeting in February?
I'm all right with that.
Okay. And that's okay with the seconder? Any further discussion on that? We'll go to Ron Sasso.
Thank you, Mayor. Though, though I appreciate the Alderman Wright's desire to get this resolved, I think there are two things that hold me back on this. One, this was something, you know, similar issue went to South Dakota Supreme Court, and I think that is something that is going to trump anything that city staff are going to look at. The other thing is that we do have long-range planning coming up, and I believe that we would be using staff time to work on something that we will be getting addressed in that process. So I think it would be in our best interest, and I'm sure that that would be on the agenda when we look at that long-range planning, to have that, that area in all of Rapid City covered. So, thank you. I'll yield.
Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I may address Director of Community Planning, Brett Limbaugh. Mr. Limbaugh, quick question for you. I guess, sir, do you see any way that, based on the motion on the floor, what, I guess, what's your thoughts on the motion on the floor, basically?
Well, actually, item 25 on your agenda tonight is your authorization for us to advertise for the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan, of course, includes transportation planning within it. It would be my advice for you to let us look at this particular issue along with all the other transportation issues that we're going to have when we do that plan. Now, that's going to take, generally, about a year to 18 months to do those plans, because we're looking at more than just roadways and land use. We're also looking at emergency services and utilities and a number of other items. So it wouldn't be something that we could deliver by February, but it certainly would be included within the overall city plan. I think that might be best.
Thank you, sir. I guess, given the advice of Brett Limbaugh, the community planning director, I would maybe ask that Jerry consider withdrawing his motion and letting the city work on what they've already got going. Thank you.
We'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I understand Alderman Wright's concerns about this, but I also wonder about the city inserting itself into a dispute between the Wildwood residents and Mr. Hamm. I will support looking into it, but I do think it probably should come through the comprehensive plan update. And I don't know that this is the most important issue, and I sometimes, I think, always say that we play whack-a-mole up here, that something pops its head up and we hit it. But frequently, we're not hitting the most important, important thing, because we sidetracked with everything else. So I understand the concern, but I think it should probably come through the comprehensive plan update. The other thing, though, that I do have concerns about, that the Wildwood residents mentioned several, and about the dangerous road leading into Sheridan Lake in the winter that ices. I used to live up in Carriage Hills, so I know how treacherous and scary that can be when you're sliding sideways into a street. So I do have concerns about that, and so I'll be talking with Mr. Walter Storf to see if we can explore that for the winter, if there's anything we can do. But anyway, I won't support, even though I'm in support of Mr. Wright's plan, I think we should do it in the comprehensive update. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. We'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, I'll make a substitute motion or an amendment to the motion, whichever is proper, is to allow this to proceed under the comprehensive plan that community planning is under, under the project to do right now.
We'll handle that as a substitute motion. Your substitute, and we have a second. So the substitute motion is to simply have this item to be handled under the comprehensive plan discussion, which was approved when the council approved item 25 a few moments ago. And Richie, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for letting me to continue. We tried to vet as much as possible at the Public Works Committee meeting, and we had several speakers come forward this, on this subject, and I just want to remind the council that we had a minimum of 20 different residents come forward to oppose the name change on this. And I think they would be comfortable with the idea of having this go through the entire process, rather than trying to set this aside as an individual process. The major concern that I have right now on this is that this is going to have a special process to it in not giving staff the full time or opportunity to review the entire complex issue. That's my motion, and so I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Richie. We'll go to Jerry Wright.
To my respective members of the council, I would remind you that I am a civil engineer. I have a master's degree in urban engineering and transportation planning. And I have done, and I did do the transportation plans for Rapid City about 40 years ago. And I think there's, some people think that I'm saying we're going to develop Shooting Star into this road, and we're going to do that. No, that's not it at all. That's not it at all. We're not going to do anything in disrespect or counter to the court at all. There's a better way to get into that neighborhood and give these people safe, reliable access, maintainable by us. And I think we should give it an attempt, come back in two months and say, "Our staff can do it. I hope they can do it. They better be able to do it." And say, and some meetings with the customers, our constituents, and even, like myself, and say, "I think we can do this, and here's where we can go." And yes, it will be a part of the major update of the transportation plan. But we have a unique problem here. We have a neighborhood that's upset, rightfully so. We have some developers or landlords in the area that are upset, rightfully so. So it's because we've never finished the job. And I think we ought to put some emphasis on it. And I think a timeline is good, you know? A deadline puts a little sweat equity into it. It makes people produce. And you know, if the staff comes back and says, "You know, we need a little more time?" So be it. But I'd like to hold it, hold it to the standard, saying, "You know, we have a problem. This is a big one. We have a lot of people here today. We had them last Tuesday." And the council, our staff can sit down and say, "I think we can go this way. Here are some thoughts. What do you think?" And then incorporate it into the update. Give us some effort. When we sit there and say we're going to let this become a part of the major plan, I'm just thinking we're kind of foo fooing it. I don't like that. This is a specific issue. This has been around a long time. It's been to the Supreme Court twice. There are significant issues out there, and let's handle them. Let's at least give it some study.
Thank you, Jerry.
Our staff needs something to do for the next two months. It'd be good for them, good training.
We'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for Mr. Limbaugh, if I may. In light of my colleagues' comments, Mr. Limbaugh, can you do it in two months, or what's the shortest timeframe you could have it thoroughly looked at within?
You know, it depends on the detail you would want in a transportation plan. Are we looking at an engineering plan? Are we drawing lines on maps? Certainly, we can draw lines. Whether or not they're buildable is going to be something entirely different. So I, again, I think there are a lot of transportation issues we need to look at, including this one. Doesn't appear that development... Doesn't appear that development is at all imminent here, and we have plenty of time to work on this, and I would prefer to do it as part of the overall study. My respect, Mr. Wright's thoughts on this. If it's council's desire that we move forward and do a special study, we'll certainly do that.
Do you have any idea as far as the, the cost of a special study outside of the cost of the comprehensive plan?
You know, until we have a scope, I couldn't give you a price tag on it. Generally, these are thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars to do plans, if you're gonna do something in, at the level of detail that I think you need to do, but again, you know, we, we can, we can put together maybe a list of alternatives right away, designs, but that by no means is gonna mean that they're buildable. So, I mean, it kinda, it kinda depends on what you're looking for.
But if this is on your list for the comprehensive plan, then the cost associated with that is going to be encompassed or engulfed in what we, we were, we're already allocating for this comprehensive plan update, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right, and part of the, the comprehensive plan process, when we hire our consultants, they have transportation planners on their staff, they have land use planners, they have emergency preparedness planners, so on and so forth, so they have the expertise that we need to supplement staff expertise. And I, you know, I, I think we'll, we'll definitely get this done. It's just a matter of when you want it done and whether or not you want it as a comprehensive, part of the comprehensive plan, or whether or not you don't want it as a special study.
How soon could you foresee us having selected a firm for this update?
We're looking to January to hire.
Okay. Would it be feasible to have them look at this small portion within that plan, kind of on the front end of that, so we can still get this information from Mr. Wright within the, you know, maybe three or four months' time, as opposed to two months, or waiting a full year for the, the full plan to be done?
Yeah.
Is that doable, or can we ask the question?
Yeah, we can put that in their scope, services. If that's what council directs us to do, then we will include that in the scope.
Okay. Jerry, would you be okay with that?
I want resolution in the fairly near future, where these people in Wildwood can relax, and rest assured, we're gonna go to a solution that's not gonna, that's gonna end their concerns, and also help the property owners up in that area, so they know which way to go. Sixty days was a suggestion, if it's ninety days, that's not the end of the world. I don't want it nine years, or six years. I want it fairly soon, and I think we can do it, and I think we, I hope we have people on staff that can do some preliminary work at least, and I don't think, hopefully we're not totally dependent on the consultant, but... You're saying what, within?
I'm just asking if, if you could get behind that, that idea, so that we're not, yeah, expending resources that we're going to be expending anyway, I mean, earlier, doubling up on this one issue.
I was expecting an internal staff study, not a consultant hire, so that's not double spending, is it?
Well, it sounds like it might be a little bit more involved than maybe we had originally thought.
I would say that if the staff could do the initial groundwork, some of the background, and then hand it over to the consultant, that's fine, but I think we'd have...
He's already said it's gonna take longer than what you would like it within, so I'm trying to allow them to leverage what we already have approved with their workload, and still get a resolution in a timely fashion. Something to think about, I yield.
I think this is one of the, one of the items that I think maintain, right now, waiting until the comprehensive plan is done, makes the most sense, because even if we try to look at just that section, there, there's more involved than that, and knowing that, I think directing staff to really dig into this, again, we're talking a lot of time, a lot of money, and even though it would be great to get a resolution, it may still not be the resolution that would come forward in a full comprehensive plan. I, I, I really think if we wanna do it, we should get it done the right way, and if we weren't looking at a comprehensive plan within the next year coming forward, I think we'd be, we'd be having a different discussion here, but I think because that is imminent, that we are, we have that definitely coming, I think that makes sense to just hold off, I'm sure the residents are probably okay with, with nothing happening towards development. I, I might be wrong, but I think, I think it's that that area has held, held its own for quite some time, and I think, and I know from the development standpoint, I'm sure developers are, are also impatient, but at the same time, that's, I think it makes more sense even for them to be waiting for the comprehensive plan as well, so, you know, I will not be supporting this, though I, I fully respect your reasoning behind it, though. Thank you.
Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Beal, did you have something you wanted to say, sir?
Chad, could you fine tune your question, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Beal, could you speak to the motion on the floor, sir, which is to, what is it again? I don't even remember.
I, I'd like to address this, you, this is the real reason why you see all of the Wildwood people in the surrounding area here. We're here on a application to change the name of, of Shooting Star or extend it, and you see what we're getting into. This is just the tip of the iceberg, that it's not about changing the name of, of Shooting Star Lane, it's about running a road through Wildwood to serve the areas outside of Wildwood. And I think tying this to this change of name and tying it into Wildwood, we're kind of being held hostage on this.
Excuse me, sir. We've already denied the name change, that's been denied already, so...
Any further study shouldn't be tied to just Westwood. I, I think it's a comprehensive...
This is a comprehensive plan for the entire city, so...
That's what I wanted, understood.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Well, I, yes.
Hold on a second. Chad, you still...
I'm sorry, sir, I've forgotten your name. Did you have something, okay?
Mr. Taylor has it.
Could you please fine tune your question to keep it to the motion on the floor?
Excuse me, sir.
Could I make a comment?
Well, sir, I...
We, we've, we've passed, we've passed the time for, for public comment. If a council member has a, a specific question, a member of the audience, we can, we can certainly...
Sir, do you have a...
I just, it'll take me thirty seconds.
Would you like to explain, nah, boy.
I have no plans for development up there, primarily because of the issues you've just addressed, and you've done a very good job tonight. Something needs to be done, but do it right, and I have no plans, and I'm not gonna make any plans until there's a plan in place, so there's access, ingress and egress out of that property. Thank you. I'm very pleased with the way you've handled this tonight.
Okay, I yield the floor.
That's all I'm asking for.
Any further discussion on the, on the motion? Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to just, first, let me rewind a little bit. Jerry, I, Alderman Wright, I really respect what your education background and everything that you've brought to the table tonight on this subject, but my concern is we're gonna have these, require these folks come back in the first part of February to address this issue, if the staff can get this done in time, what you're requiring. I'm not comfortable with that short a timeframe, plus asking the residents of Wildwood to come back within sixty to ninety days, or whatever timeframe it is. Allow, please allow them to come in during the entire comprehensive plan process. Thank you, Mayor, I'll yield the floor.
Mayor, may I address? Hold on a second. We, we have a substitute motion on, on the floor to, to simply follow through with the comprehensive plan development process. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Please keep your comments brief.
I'm fully aware of the planning process, and it doesn't exclude the citizens, Richie. And I think the people out here deserve an answer, and that's why I was saying, why can't we come up with a resolution of, at least in draft form, in sixty days? I could, but I guess if that's not gonna happen, when can you do it? If we're gonna make it part of the comprehensive plan, and it's gonna take maybe a year? Is that okay with the people out here? But I think ultimately, we need to resolve the issues and all the problems that create this emotional chaos and confusion, and we need to put some things and set them right, so that everybody knows where we're going. And I think that the, I think we can answer a lot of questions, there are a lot of concerns from Leo, from the residents, from Mr. Taylor, and everybody. So I guess if, if they're willing to wait for a year, we're not gonna do anything different, I, I'm okay with it. I, I just want a good resolution. 'Cause it's a mess, it's been a mess for thirty years. Let's resolve it. I don't care. I'll vote for it to get rich. Let's get her done.
Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we just get a quick nod of heads? Are people out there okay waiting for this comprehensive plan to be done, to take a look and do it right? Does anyone wanna shake their head? I see, I see more nods, I see zero shakes. There is one? Okay, I just wanted to do that, there's...
We're going to proceed with the, we're going to proceed with a vote on the, on the motion, unless a council member has a specific question. The motion on the, the motion on the floor is a substitute motion to simply proceed with the development of the comprehensive plan and to address this issue within the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan was approved with item thirty-five. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We're now on item number thirty-three. Jerry? We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and take a, we've had a request for a recess, we'll go ahead and take a ten-minute recess, and we'll come back at quarter to nine. We're going to reconvene. Our next order of business is item number thirty-three. Jerry, can you read thirty-three into the record for us?
Item three, thirty-three is to acknowledge your report and the discussion on Power Tech Incorporated applications for water rights, and I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded, do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion by Lewis to acknowledge and a second by Nordstrom, and we'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Hi, thanks. I just pulled this because there was some misunderstanding, I think, in the audience that we are not looking at a water application from Power Tech. It was out of an abundance of caution that the mayor and some council leadership decided that we should be discussing what's going on in our, in our neighborhood, even though there's not an application here before us. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the, on the motion? Terry, would you like to speak on this item?
Only if you have questions, if you'd like me to give my report, I can, or if you have specific questions for me, I'm more than glad to answer them for you.
Motion is to acknowledge. Any discussion on the motion to acknowledge? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item thirty-four, legal and finance, we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Confirm appointment of Lisa Ray Sisestine to the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center Board, I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded, do we have a motion?
I make motion to deny.
We have motion by Wright, and do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and a second by Doyle to deny. Any discussion on the motion to deny? Ron Sasso.
I think, looking, looking at the applicant and the, the interests, I guess, I don't, I don't see this as a serious concern as far as the, the candidate's qualifications, and I think that has been brought forward, so I will not be supporting this motion.
And we'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and unfortunately, we've heard some of the comments tonight related to this particular issue, and I think it's very apparent, unfortunately, that the election cycle has begun for next year, as we all can tell, and I'm just gonna, that's the eight-hundred-pound gorilla, we all know why some people have spoke tonight, because that's exactly why they're here. And let me just read a little bit about the qualifications of this individual, and I won't support the motion at all, but this person has been a marketing executive with New Rushmore Radio, and has worked with businesses and nonprofits doing marketing plans, fits perfectly with this particular board. They've worked nineteen years with individual businesses, have written grants to the state with different committees that they've served on, this individual's served with. This person's been a chair and vice chair of state boards, such as the American Cancer Society Tobacco-Free Network, has done budget work with one of the local churches, the Bethel Assembly of God, has been a vice chair and chair for many different organizations, one being the Community Services Connection, and so, and has been placed on many citywide events, including children's play area for the citywide Fourth of July celebration, as a more of a detail, but this person is well-qualified, and I think the words that have been spoken tonight are unfounded, and I haven't heard any reasons why this person isn't duly qualified for this position, and I yield the floor. Thank you.
Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, once again, would like to add that we've got, you know, private citizens wanna bring up their concerns, they're more than welcome to do that, and I think Mr. Davis speaks from his own experiences as a member of the Civic Center Board, so I don't have any issues with him bringing forth his concerns, I don't think we should be vetting him for that. I mean, this is, you know, it's a legitimate concern, he can bring it forward, so I don't see any reason to mention that personally. Thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion is to deny. I would like to make a few comments before we proceed to the vote. I think that this appointee, Lisa Sisestine, brings tenacity, wisdom, and diversity to the Civic Center Board of Directors. I think she'd do a fine job. A reference was made earlier to rivals, the, the current occupant of this, of this seat is certainly no rival, I think he's a good man, and he's served the board admirably, and I believe that the qualities that this nominee brings forward are qualities that I wanted to see on the board. I welcome this, I welcome this discussion, and you are, your vote is your prerogative. I would ask that you strongly consider voting yes on this nomination, I think that Lisa brings a lot to the board, and I think you'll be pleased with her service. Any further discussion on the motion? The motion is to deny the appointment. All in favor of the denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Lewis. Roberts. Wright.
Yes.
Laurenti. Sasso. Nordstrom. Scott. Clayton. Peterson. Doyle. Six to four.
The appointment has been denied. We will move to item number thirty-seven. Amanda.
I make a motion to approve the capital plan for street drainage and MIP projects for November of 2012, and I'd like to retain the floor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Doyle, and you have the floor.
Thank you. Just wanted to bring to the public's attention that at the capital plan meeting, there is an item that was added for about seventy-five thousand dollars, that's the projected amount for the project of the East Anamosa pedestrian crossing by Walmart. Just wanted to bring it to the public's attention, that this item was brought forth by the public, by a request from the public. It was vetted, it was determined that the pedestrian count does warrant a pedestrian crossing for the safety of the people, and it is currently being, being on the CIP plan for 2013. And then also, as a side note, hopefully some good news, there was a hundred thousand dollars that was allocated in the CIP plan for some shade structures for capital improvement for the Parks Division. The good news is, is that the estimate of that project is now looking more like about thirty-five thousand dollars, so that's gonna free up, hopefully, about sixty-five thousand dollars, and I know that energy conservation measures have been very important to the city council and the mayor's office, and that is sixty-five thousand dollars that we will be looking at, at possibly doing some of those energy conservation projects that have already been identified and may fit into the budget, so we'll be looking at that, and I just thought the public should be aware of that. Thank you, I'll yield the floor. I yield the floor.
Any further discussion? Motion is for approval of item 37. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 44. Amanda.
Approve, I make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2013 Allied Arts funding allocation for the community investments of arts and humanity, and I'd like to retain the floor.
Go ahead.
Uh, just wanted to let everybody know, as it was pointed out to me, if you'll remember the 2013 budget, the budget approved $100,000 for this item. It's actually 105. It was not increased. It is only 100,000. However, there happens to be $5,000 that's being carried over from the 2012 fiscal year. So just wanted to make sure the public was aware of that and that these funds are allocated per the attachment that's linked to this agenda item. Thank you. I yield the floor.
We have a motion by Amanda and a second by Chad Lewis. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 46.
Item number 46, authorize mayor and finance officer to sign the combined election agreement with Pennington County for the 2013 municipal election to be held on June 4th, year 2013. I make a motion to approve, and I'd like to retain the floor.
Second.
And a second by Nordstrom, and you have the floor.
Thank you. This is more towards the Ward Four residents. There was some concern, and it was brought forth from some residents in Ward Four, that some polling places during the last election, due to the redistricting or redistribution of voting sites and precincts, actually had them voting at polling places that were not the closest to their geographical location, and this has been put forth to the county, to Pennington County, and it is being relooked at, and the county will be working with the mayor's office and the city to take a look at this and see if we can make it a little bit more equitable. And again, for my Ward Four citizens, just want you to know, it is being looked at. The county will sell, send out red, uh, registration, voter registration polling place forms once they have a new location, if there is a redistribution, and I'll try to keep you abreast of, of what happens. And I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. Any further discussion on item 46? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 48. Amanda.
And now, item number 48 is a resolution number 2012-134, providing non-union employees with the same cost of living increase in January of 2013 being received by the city's union employees. I make a motion to approve, and I'd like to retain the floor.
Second.
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Nordstrom to approve, and you have the floor.
Um, again, just, I was not aware of this, so again, I just want the public to be aware of this. This cost of living increase that's being awarded to the non-union employees to match the union employees is only .5 percent. That is not a lot. It's .005 of a percent increase on their wages. What I did want to bring up is that also included, it, for the union employees, if I understand Mr. Barber correctly, is that if the total sales tax increase for 2012 comes in at more than 5.5, or at least 5.5 percent, or greater, there will be an additional 2.5% increase that will be coming 4th in July. So this is a small, little, minuscule cost of living, but we do have the opportunity, because right now, I believe, it's close to 7% with three more months of sales tax revenue to come in to go. It looks like we might make that 5.5% growth over last year, so, and I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. Any further discussion? The motion is for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now at the end of the consent calendar. We are now on items 54 through 121. We have a motion to open public comment. Motion by Scott, second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we will first go to item number 57. We'll recognize Steve Weslick.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. At this time, it's my understanding that item 57 will be tabled by the council. That's the information I have received, and in view of my understanding of that, of that fact, I'd like to defer our comments, mine, Mr. Winkles and Mr. Desmond's, at this time, and, you know, if we, if we have a change and that's not tabled, then I'd request the opportunity to make comments at that time.
Good. We had two other speaker request forms relating to that item, and we'll, CJ and Brian will wait, okay? And we'll go to Pete Wernicki on item 120. Item 120.
Pete Wernicki, Chair, Compass Committee Chair. Just wanted to say I'm available for questions and comments on item 120.
Thank you, Pete. We do not have any further speaker request forms on items 54 through 121. Do we have a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 54. Amanda.
Second reading, ordinance number 5878, an ordinance to expand the definition of hazardous trees on private property by amending section 12.32.100 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Amanda and a second by Bonnie. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 55.
Second reading, ordinance number 5879, an ordinance to establish a competitive bidding process for the sale of off-sale package liquor licenses by amending section 5.12.030 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Amanda, second by Ron Sasso. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 56.
Second reading, ordinance number 5880, an ordinance to allow removal of a partially consumed bottle of wine from the premises of certain alcoholic beverage licensees by amending section 5.12.080 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Amanda, second by Richie, to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 57.
Item number 57, I make a motion to table the first reading ordinance number 5888, an ordinance to regulate hookah lounges by adopting chapter 5.40 of the Rapid City Municipal Code.
We have a second by Bonnie Peterson. The motion is to table. No discussion on a tabling motion. All in favor of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 58. Jerry.
Item 58 is to, to deny the request for city participation in the survey geotech preliminary design and construction of a water main in Golden Eagle Drive Center Line, and I make a motion that this item be returned to staff and the Public Works Committee for a negotiated compromise for resolution.
Second.
We have a motion by Jerry Wright and a second by John Roberts to return to the next Public Works Committee meeting.
Returns to staff, return to staff and Public Works Committee for a resolution. Let me re-read.
Like an update at the next Public Works meeting? And then if we have more time...
We don't have an update, certainly, but I want, the motion is to return to staff and the Public Works Committee for a negotiated compromise for resolution. It goes to staff and us.
Okay. So the direction tonight is to proceed with compromising and bringing forward a, a resolution, or at least an update at the next Public Works meeting? And the staff needs more time.
My motion stands, as I read it. If they want to bring an update at the second Public Works meeting, that's fine, but I want it, I don't know, for 30 days? You need 30 days to resolve it? 30 days. If they want to bring in reports, I don't care about it.
We'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick question for Terry, Mr. Terry. So, or perhaps as long as I understand the motion, do you see, does this work for you? This compromise, I guess, can you give us kind of an overview of where you can see a compromise possibly going?
A little more direction would be helpful, because...
I can give it to you if you want it.
Yeah, I guess...
I guess staff had its recommendations on this, presented to the Public Works Committee, and Public Works Committee made the recommendation to this council as it came forward, so if you would like us to sit down and review additional options and come forward, I, I don't know whether our recommendation will change.
Okay, let me...
We're attracted to change our recommendation. I guess we can come up with something else.
My motion stands, but to clarify the issue. The water line goes through a right-of-way that adjoins a property that the city subdivided some years ago. It is my opinion, because of that adjoining property that we own, we subdivided and we made a statement, we would make the improvements and so forth, with, and pledged that with our good faith and credit. It appears that we are now, what, negating that? I feel that we need to sit down and talk to the petitioner, the developer, and say, let's negotiate on how we can get this done and express our full faith and credit and keep our word. I don't think we have the right to just negate keeping our word. It's like if I tell a guy, I want you to come by, I'm gonna give you a $20 bill. He shows up, he expects to get the $20 bill. If I don't, I have not kept my word. I have not kept my full faith and credit. It is my understanding in this situation, when we subdivided this, we would stand by improvements along a property without posting a bond or, or money. I just want us to stand up and stand by with our full good, full faith and credit and negotiate resolution of how that water line is going to be designed and paid for and built, and we pay our fair share. If in the resolution negotiations you find that we have no fair share, I don't think that's gonna be a finding, but if it is, that's at least a negotiated finding. I just, I just think denying it under the circumstances is not proper.
Excuse me, sir. Mr. Mayor, can I continue? Have the floor?
Me.
Thank you. Just a quick question for either Terry or Mr. Wright, evidently. What, we gave our word, I guess, what is the evidence of that? I'm not questioning that we did give our word, but I just don't understa, I mean, is it someone telling us we gave our word, or how is, what's the history on this? I guess I'm a little ignorant.
If we could do this, Terry, could you give us a brief presentation of, of this issue and your position on it, please?
Yes, I can. And I'll be honest with you, we may get into more detail than we want to do at a council meeting, and maybe, maybe better have some of these discussions at a, at a Public Works meeting. I was just, I was okay with the recommendation, I was just, wasn't sure when you said negotiations, what, I wasn't sure what the total, well, if you were expecting a certain outcome or not, but...
Let me clarify why you're doing that, is that if, through your good faith negotiation and discussion, you decide that cities should and can't pay 40% of it, that's what I'm looking for. I'm not gonna put a number on it. I think that's your job and their job. If that's a fair request.
All right, I don't have the exact date, but somewhere, definitely around 2006, the city subdivided some property out around the fire station out on Highway 16. The fire station sits at this location, city owns this lot and this lot, and as part of that approval, typically a developer would have to either install the improvements or, or submit surety for them in a form that will require them to install some improvements at a later date. The city would, decided that, based on its good faith, we would not submit a surety to them, to ourselves, but that we would come up with funds at a later date if necessary. If we recall, this summer, it was probably last winter, actually, when the developer, Phil Olson, back on this property, came to city and requested us to cost-share in the development of Promised Road from about this location down to here, we did. We came up with the funding for that, and we picked up a portion of that project for infrastructure, including streets, water, and I believe sewer, if I remember right. So we did pick up that portion. The portion that's in question is this portion of Eagle Ridge Drive, right here. Ultimately, the question is this. It's not, it's not whether we're gonna read an egg on our, on our agreement, and it's, it's an issue of whether this project that they're, that they are installing right now warrants the installation and the city's use of its money for the installation of water along this stretch right here. Again, there's a lot of details that are involved in, in part of this, and I don't know if you want to get into all the details right now or not, but I, I would say the city's not reading egg in on its agreements necessarily, it's just a question of whether this was a private property owner or developer that owned these tracks instead of the city, is this a project that we, we would require that developer to pony up his surety, his surety money for? I, I think that's the question here.
And, and would we? If that was privately held property, and they had posted charity or whatever, would we expect them to participate?
I don't know that we would, and, and my conversations with Deltech or City Engineer, I, you know, we don't have a really good track record on when we've pulled these sureties on developers, and we just, we haven't done much of it in the past, so, you know, it's not wrong, it's just different, I guess I would say. And staff's opinion is, at this point, this project does not warrant the use of city funds to extend the water line. Keep in mind, water, we currently have water to this lot along Promised Road, and we have water access to this lot along the, the service road, so it's questionable whether the water line at this point would have any use to the city lots.
Let me, let me, Engineering 101 Water Systems, best thing you can have is a looped system.
You're correct.
So, as it stands, without that extension, our lots do not have a looped system, correct?
That's correct.
And it would be more marketable, safer, fire protection, everything else, if it was looped, correct?
I don't know if they'd be more marketable. I, I'm not a realtor.
Well, okay, I, I, that, this, that could be questionable, but it's better engineering, correct? If it's looped.
In, in the big picture of things, potentially, yes.
Yeah. Not potentially, really. If it's looped, you have a better water system. So I think we do it. That's my position. I hope the council will side with me.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a substitute motion that we send this back to the Public Works Committee meeting so that the details can be vetted there and then can be brought back to council.
I think that's my motion.
We have a...
Basically, they take it back.
Yeah, wait a, wait a minute, Jerry. We, we have a different motion on the floor. The substitute motion is simply to take this back to committee. Your motion was to negotiate a settlement and take it back to committee. So we are now discussing the substitute motion. Amanda, you still have the floor.
I'll yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. We'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I have concerns. Be, I can support taking it back to Public Works, but not a negotiated settlement. I have, what the staff, I think, is trying to tell us is that if that was a, if we, our lots were by a private developer, we would not require them to do it. So I don't see that it's in the city's best interest to do it. We want to encourage development, but I think if we're not following our own rules, that we're just going to encourage other people to come and say, hey, look, the city has this lot, let's see what we can get from them. And I have concerns about that, and I have concerns our staff has told us repeatedly that they don't think it's our, our responsibility to do it. And so, anyway, I will support sending it back to Public Works, but that's it. Thank you.
Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another issue that's been brought forward to the Public Works Committee. Again, I don't have a problem with sending it back to the Public, Public Works Committee for a further review. However, we just wanted to reiterate that we have gone through this process, but since our chair was absent during that time, I'll fully support the, the concept of sending this back to committee again. Thank you.
Ron Sasso.
I just would like to echo Richie's comments. I know this did go through Public Works, you know, Alderman Wright was out of town at that time. I, I don't necessarily see the result changing, but at the same time, I think we can, I think it's reasonable to send it back for additional review and discussion with the chair as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ron, and we'll go to Jerry Wright.
Just to clarify, I guess I heard Bon, excuse me, President Peterson say that if this were privately held lots, we wouldn't expect them to pay for the improvements. That's not true, is it? If these were private lots, would they not be expected to pay for the improvements upon their adjoining property, or right-of-way, normally?
Potentially, with the adjoining property, the question whether this development, which is adjoining off of Promise Road, not really to the south of Eagle Ridge Drive, whether this particular project would, would warrant the installation of the water line. That's, I think, where we're having the discussion.
I'm going to rein in the discussion. The motion is to continue to the next Public Works meeting, Jerry. So, please keep your discussion to that motion.
Okay, I'm fine with that, but I just don't, I want some resolution besides discussion, but thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Everyone understands the motion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 59.
59 is the bid for the West Boulevard Sanitary Sewer Reconstruction Project. We received multiple bids on this item. Recommendation is to award to Lind Exco Inc. in the amount of $581,481.93.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval, and we have an abstention from Chad Lewis. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is the 2013 Street Light Maintenance Contract. We received two bids on this. Recommendation is to award to Solar Sound Corporation in the amount of $44,999.87.
Motion by Richie, second by Steve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 61 is the bid for the 2012 Automated Containers for the Solid Waste Division, and we actually did not receive any bids on this item, so the request is to authorize staff to go and receive quotes.
We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Nordstrom to authorize staff to go to quotes. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You're now on items 62 through 119. Pauline or council members, is there anybody that would like to remove one of these items for separate consideration? Or Chief Allender? 62 through 119. Seeing none, can we have a motion to approve? Motion by Peterson, second by Nordstrom to approve 62 through 119. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 120. John Roberts, if you could read this into the agenda, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 120, council approval for closed, unnoticed, undocumented, secret Compass Work Session Meetings. I want to make a motion, and then when I get a second, I want to hold the floor for discussion. I'm going to make this very easy, I'll make my motion first. I just want to make the motion for approval for Compass Work Session Meetings. And if I can get a second?
We have a motion and a second for Compass Work Session Meetings.
Approval for Compass Work Session Meetings. What's that?
That include the adjectives or not?
Well, I put the adjectives in just for excitement purposes. So, I think the only...
I think you need to clarify your motion, the motion for, to approve...
Motion, okay, yeah, you're right, Mayor, I'm sorry. I make the motion for approval for unnoticed, undocumented Compass Work Session Meetings.
Okay. All right, and you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I made that very easy for everyone. We've discussed this forever, we've discussed it for months now. The thing that I've been saying is, I just want a vote on this, up or down, approval to do it. That's all I want. So with that, I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion on the motion, we'll go to Jerry Wright.
Please explain to me what you mean by work sessions. Are these sessions where an audit is being conducted, or investigations being discussed, or an audit's being discussed? What do you mean by work sessions? I just want to know, somebody who can answer.
John, you want to answer that?
I don't know, to be honest with you, if we've ever really clarified work session meetings.
If I may.
We'll go to Charity Doyle. Charity?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, or Mayor. If I may call Chairman Wernicki up, we have copies of the Compass Committee bylaws that were permitted by our ordinance to allow the committee to create. It does provide for work sessions, it was voted on and passed unanimously, and if you would like to bring the copies forward so I can distribute them, that'd be great. And then I'll point out the language in there.
Thank you.
I have one. Are they short?
I'll share with Bonnie.
Okay, and then, section 4.04, can I read it? Chairperson, the chairperson may establish work sessions as deemed necessary to discuss issues for placement on the agenda, or any matter that may be deemed sensitive or confidential in nature. Mr. Wernicki, could you tell us when that passed? My memory is a little vague on that.
That passed at our very first public meeting.
Okay.
Is when we did the bylaws.
Thank you. Is there anything you, else you'd like to lend to this, just to, just to help clarify? Just, even with the motion, it sounded like there's a bit of confusion.
Yeah. This actually gets a little confusing here. I understand what John is trying to say. I've been up here five times already in front of the full council trying to explain this, and a little surprised we're still all going at it. The law is kind of pretty clear. If anybody had bothered to really simply go to the Attorney General's office, open public meetings law, it's very, explains very well what this type of thing with a work session is. And I won't bore anybody with it, because you've probably seen most of this. Over a month ago, I approached council leadership with this very same question. We were clear in our meetings, in Compass meetings, we were clear when we set this up, what we could do, what we couldn't do, what was the law, what wasn't the law. Objections from various people, both on the council and the committee and the mayor, have been constantly coming up. Valid questions, but there's a simple solution, because if you read the law itself, it tells you how to resolve that. All we have to do is literally go to the Attorney General and ask for a determination of whether or not that conduct that we were doing, is it legal? Is it right? And they will give us a determination. I asked council leadership over a month ago to look into that. We haven't got an answer yet. I don't know what, where the status is. I'm assuming it's still being discussed, but the point is, we want a resolution too. We've always stated from day one, we are going to have concerns that we need some privacy. We're trying to follow the law as we have been told and explained to us what it means. We're not trying to circumvent, we're not trying to hide anything. I was a little surprised at the verbiage that John liked to throw us in, I think he just likes to throw it in just to get my goat, but the word "secret," okay? It's been bandied about quite a bit. I just wanted to say, what secret? I announced at the last Compass meeting that we were going to have a work session. Now, we've been avoiding those because of this issue, and we've been trying to do some workarounds. It's not very efficient, it's very cumbersome, it does lead to some miscommunications, but thank God, the work that we were doing at the time, we could do this. But at the last session, or meeting that we had, it became very apparent that by the end of this year, we have to come up with our next year's auditing plan. And we've got a list of items, both from our auditors, as well as that has been brought up by our own, own committee and others, that we have to kind of weed out and go through. Well, we could not do that in the one last public meeting. And we're going to have to sit down and literally go through the pile and decide which ones we want to bring up, maybe all of them. We don't know yet, but we have to have that work session. Now, we don't want these topics floating out in public until we're ready to say, hey, we're going to recommend these topics. That's why we need this meeting. So in the meantime, here we have an item being put on with the word "secret" again. And I'd love to somebody, please define to me what that means, because we announce them publicly. We've always told everybody on the council, Mayor, you can sit in on these things, we're just not, but there's going to have to be times we're going to have to ask you to leave the room, because we're going to be talking about some topics that we don't want, it's a sensitive issue, until the proper time. Now, if you want to, there's this motion that you're looking at right now, we've got a little problem with that, because we're being told on the one hand, by people that have been objecting to this, that we're doing something wrong. Now you're voting on a motion that's saying you want to approve us to do something that's supposedly wrong, or against the law, or that hasn't been determined yet by the state. We know there's a gray area here. All we want to do, we'd love to ask the Attorney General, one way or another, if we haven't been conducting it properly, we'll change it. But in the meantime, how can you turn around and actually vote to say, okay, have your meetings?
Pete, I'm going to, I'm going to rein in the discussion. I'm going to ask Charity if she wouldn't mind clarifying her, her question.
I don't remember what I asked you, quite honestly. It's been going on for, for a while. I guess I'm... What was that? Well, we've defined them now, I believe, as our bylaws, which have been posted out on the internet for quite a few months now. I guess I'm a little, a little bit confused, because it's clear that it's already allowed. So, what would we be accomplishing by approving this motion, i.e., I don't know, it just, to approve something that's already been, been approved, I guess I don't really understand the motion. Perhaps tabling would be more in order. I'll yield as I sort this out. Would you please stand by for, you may have more questions. Thank you, Peter.
Wade, before we go into further council, council lights, to clarify, I think it's important that we clarify, did the bylaws come to council for, for approval? I don't know if they have or not. Pete, would you answer that?
I think I can answer that. In your ordinance that established Compass, you gave us the authority to make our own bylaws. There was nothing in there that says that you had to approve them. That's the way the law's written.
And we did that with the assistance of the city attorney.
That's right.
Okay, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to table this item.
We have a, a motion by, a motion by Amanda Scott, I'm sorry, getting tired, a motion by Amanda Scott and a second by Charity Doyle to table. No discussion on a tabling motion. All in favor of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call, please.
Roberts. Wright. Laurenti. Sasso. Nordstrom. Scott. Clayton. Peterson. Doyle. Lewis. Four to six, motion fails.
Go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this item, because I have spoke at length before on having open and transparent government, and it seems ironic that the people who vote against these types of things and just tried to table this motion, because they don't want to be on the record as voting against open and transparent government, you know, would, I'm just going to collect myself a little before I say something that's not appropriate, but it just, it's, it's counter, it is counter to what we do here, because we work for the people. And in fact, the people that are voting against this are the same people who have described this as a committee for the people who report to the council. So it's the People's Committee. I think that's been said by the council, one of the council leaders about this committee. And so, the last thing, it's amazing to me, because it's so contrary to wanting public meetings. And I'm hoping, as we've discussed a little bit here, that there's going to be a motion that clarifies this, but it's amazing to me that these people who voted just to table this motion are afraid to be on the record, and, but they're more than willing to speak about how important it is to have these sessions closed. It just, I think that's very revealing, and I yield the floor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ron Sasso.
Thank you, Mayor. Request the ability to direct a question to council leadership.
You may, they have the option to choose to answer it.
Okay. Just curious about, just knowing in the Compass minutes from November 19th, and also Chairman Wernicki mentioned that there's, council leadership is working on a resolution on the work sessions, and where, where is, what is the current status of that, and what has been done so far in resolving that?
Are you referring about the Attorney General's decision?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
At least I believe that's what is referenced.
And is that what you're curious about? Okay. Yes, I have been trying to work with Mayor and the Compass Council members and the attorney on this. The Compass Council members and I met, and they said, let's take it to the AG. Okay? So then I met with Joel, just to make sure that was, if he thought that was the appropriate place to go. And he said, yes, it was possible, but that before he did all that work, that I should talk to the mayor to see if the mayor would abide by the decision of the Attorney General. I talked to the mayor, and the mayor said he would not. I told him we were willing to live by the Attorney General's decision. He said that, and then he backed off, and then when I kept, we had other discussions, and then he would say, it didn't need to go to the Attorney General, because he would trust Joel Landin's judgment. That, you know, Joel says it's legal, then it's legal. However, the mayor still doesn't like the decision, then it's legal. So then I went back and talked, and in that conversation also, I can't remember the day that we met, but in that comment also, the mayor recognizes that some information should be kept private, and that should you be able to use executive sessions for the Compass meeting. Well, then our hands are tied, because then Joel says the definition of executive sessions doesn't allow for, and I may be, you know, I'm kind of paraphrasing the legal terminology. Well, Mayor, I'm sure you'll be able to respond. So I asked the mayor, because I agreed, I told him that we were willing to live by the Attorney General's decision. And in that same comment, session, the mayor said that we could, you know, send it to the Attorney General, but he would never say that he would live by the decision. So at that point, I thought it was a moot point to do that. So then, then he said he wanted an up and down vote from the council, you know, whether, like what we're trying to discuss now, if we should do it or not, and then he would consider whether he would veto it. So, what I did next was then I suggested that Joel and Callan get together and narrowly define under what situations the Compass Committee could work under. And that was to be brought forward... And that was to be brought forward, and I guess, was it last council meeting? Anyway, then another plan was, then the Compass people said that, that they wanted to just go, well, and then I thought they were going to just back off from having closed meetings. That's what one of the persons told me. So, then the next thing I know, we're back to here. After the last council meeting, when Councilman Robert said he was going to bring this back, I did email him and ask him if he was going to do, you know, Callan and Joel thing, but he didn't respond to me on that. So, I don't want to put words in the mayor's mouth, but I didn't think it was fair to continue to get an AG decision when it would have been a mute point if the mayor would not have abided by it. If he's going to still push for it, whether the Attorney General says it's okay or not, you know, why bother? So, that's why I did not continue along that path, and Joel didn't, you know, we'd basically just end up to where we are now. So, that's, any other questions?
No. If, I was, Mayor, would, I guess it would probably be in, would make sense if you were to respond to that. And I'm thinking you want to at this point.
Would you like me to?
I would like you to. And I still have other things that I want to say, but I feel that this is going in a...
Well, first of all, regarding the question to, of whether or not to ask the AG for an opinion, the Attorney General is, in the sense of asking for opinions, is another attorney. I mean, his opinions carry weight by virtue of the fact that he is the Attorney General. But, there are also, and I explained this to Bonnie, that there also needs to be a recognition that this comes down to a debate of philosophy. I already said that I am aware that Joel Landin, our city attorney, has, and I did not try to control his opinion anyway, had issued an opinion that these committee meetings could be closed. But, because this was a recommending body, and in order to function as a recommending body, it was recommended that these committees, or this committee, function as an open committee. Because here is the concern, there isn't specific, we are an aldermanic form of government. We have the authority that state, the state legislature and state law specifically gives us. Whereas Sioux Falls, which is the other audit program that I'm aware of in our state, has a home rule charter. And so, they have the ability to do virtually anything that state law doesn't specifically prohibit. There is not a specific enabling statute in Chapter Nine under municipalities to allow for independent or internal audit programs. And I have long stated that I am a supporter of this. I also recognize that, and many attorneys have said this, that when you go to court or when you go to the AG for an opinion, sometimes you need to be careful what you wish for. And this truly is a debate about openness. We have all established that we want this committee to succeed, and we want to see this committee thrive. But, the debate is about openness. And I can, I'll elaborate further, that would be going beyond your question, but I think that answers the question that you asked.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Bonnie. Couple thoughts that I have on this, and I know I've gone back and forth on this. I know originally, visited with Kealan Kelly on this and asked some questions, and the response was, okay, with the work sessions, there's the possibility we could move forward a little faster. But, at the same time, if all the meetings were open, we still could function, and it may take a little longer. Am I quoting you correctly, Kealan? I just want to make sure I'm not misquoting. I know when I was in Pierre, the South Dakota Municipal League, had asked for an opinion from Sarah Frankenstein. I don't want to miss...
Frankenstein.
Frankenstein.
Frank. She pronounces it differently. I know it's different than Mel Brooks, and anyway, and I apologize if she's listening if I misquoted her name or mispronounced it. But, you know, she was presenting as, on open meetings and looking at that. And I laid out the scenario, and in her opinion, she felt very strongly that we should be looking at having open meetings. I also visited with Joel on this, and he said, yes, that is normally the best procedure. However, he feels that we are okay with this, doing it this way. So, it's again, a matter of opinion, depending on what attorney you ask. The Open Meetings Commission may have a different opinion of what we're looking at. I know the concerns are that if we have something that is discussed openly, that the Rapid City Journal might jump on this, and next thing, we have a front page story about the price of vehicles of what we're paying. I think that's a risk we take every day. Every time we open up our mouths, we are at risk. And at the same time, if the Journal runs a story as their choice to do, and turns out there's, well, yeah, we're not looking into that, because we're looking into something else instead that we feel is more important, then it, to me, that's fine. And we even have a list of the areas that we're looking at. So, in my opinion, I feel that because this keeps coming up, it keeps coming around, it keeps being discussed, let's just change gears, make it open, make the work sessions open, let the chips fall where they may. And if we end up with publicity that is looking at something else, well, oh, well. I just think at this juncture, this will continue coming up, and at some point, we might get bit in the butt by Open Meetings Commission, saying, hey, yes, we think this isn't quite right. I think it's, we take the safest course and make them open. That's my feeling. And then this puts, also puts this issue, this ongoing discussion, to bed once and for all. So, I will yield and apologize for taking as much time as I did.
Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
If I might, and if my distinguished colleague to the left would accept a couple of minor changes, and Pete, if you'd follow with me. I read through the bylaws, and I think they're fine, except there's one thing in here that says that, and four point zero two, if you can turn to that. It says, "All meetings of quorum of the Compass Committee at which business is discussed are public meetings and open to the public at all times, except as otherwise provided in this article." I might be blind, or stupid, or asleep, but I went through it, and I didn't see anything that defined that. So, I'd like to make a suggestion that in four point zero two, you just add, where it says, "Provided in this article, comma, minutes will be kept," and as you have an open meeting, add a paragraph four point zero five, which states something to the effect that items deemed sensitive or confidential by a vote of the committee, and if they qualify under executive session laws, shall be deemed sensitive and not be an open meeting. Something to that effect. Is that workable?
Hang on.
It's a one-sentence correction. I think it gives you the protection, so if you're dealing with something super sensitive, it isn't one person at your committee says, we're going to do this, and understand that it's defined, and another's litigation, personnel, that kind of stuff. If they're found in violation, that's another issue. But, I think this would clear this up. We would have minutes for all open meetings, except those deemed as sensitive and stapled right here. You okay with that?
You can have a little more of that.
Yes.
You don't have to do that part.
Section four point zero two would add a comma, and that minutes will be kept for all open meetings. You would add a section four point zero five that would say something to the effect, items deemed sensitive or confidential by a vote of the committee, and if they qualify under the executive session, will not be open meetings. Is that fair?
Would you like to continue this back to committee to work it out? To legal and finance or public work?
This is their bylaw, this is their bylaws, and I think we'd do everything we're trying to do here, I hope.
So, you're offering a motion to change...
He might copy this, Fiona.
You're offering a motion to change the bylaws for Compass?
I'm, after hearing this debate, and having looked at the bylaws, and looking at the desires of membership, and I have no problem with items being public, except those things that are sensitive, you know, it's their bylaws, and I'm just going to say, as a member of the council, I would suggest they, take my advice, and I'll support it.
Jerry, are you offering a suggestion or a motion to change the bylaws?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
But, I don't know if I can legally do that. I don't think I can do that.
Well, you can get the floor back later, so it'll be a while. You've got seven lights, so let that percolate, and then you can make that motion later if you want. We're going to go to Richie Nordstrom.
I am still digesting the motion, but I just want to make a couple of comments, and at the same time, I'll try to digest what Jerry is asking here. Initially, I like his idea, what he's trying to suggest. But, Peter, as you know, I'm not comfortable with the words that you have in your bylaws that have it as work session. I've always felt we need to have something like a workplace investigation versus a work The idea that we're needing these investigations to be transparent is very uncomfortable for me. Peter, if I can have you address that part of it, as being a, just your initial thoughts on having a workplace investigation?
Name change. It's going to be the same type of thing. It's the idea behind the original wording was just for that purpose. It was basically to set agenda items, and if you look at the bylaws, the last number, okay, deals with the work sessions. I know what Jerry is trying to say. The problem is the moment he compared it to executive session. The last council meeting, we had, city attorney was very clear that we have to be very careful, because the executive session laws do not apply here. That's the difference. Okay?
Peter, if I can hold you just to that thought for just a second. On just the name change on Article 404, where it says work sessions, would you please consider changing that to workplace investigation? Let me use some rationale here to bring about my argument for that, is that currently, we use within the city, for example, the police department has the detectives, and they're doing investigations. They don't allow that to be public information. Risk management is another area or division that has investigations, and they don't allow that to be public consumption as well. And one other division that I'm aware of, and probably even a department, is the HR, Human Resources. They also do investigations. But, again, they don't make them public. That's why I'm very uncomfortable having these sessions becoming public, because you need that opportunity, have that privacy where it is. In those cases, in my opinion, it would start rumors. And if you were not allowed to do those workplace sessions to do that, it would help us, and I believe this to be true, is that would alleviate or mitigate the rumors that are getting perpetuated out there. There's another thought that I'm working on right now, and that has to do with the...
Richie, if you don't mind?
Yes.
I'd like to just clarify that the motion on the floor is to allow the work sessions to continue as is. So, if you want to offer a clarification motion or direction, you may do so. But, this discussion really isn't pertinent to the motion on the floor.
I'll yield to the chair's consideration here on that. I want to disagree that this is the case, because the Compass Committee needs the flexibility for having confidential or sensitive information dealt with. And if that goes public, then that can jeopardize an investigation. That's why I would like to have this committee go back and take a look at. I know what the other thought is. Mayor, it is, if these work sessions, and I would like to use the word workplace investigations, what happens if that information is leaked out? There's no consequences for that information being disseminated, other than this group having that information. I'm very uncomfortable having those investigations taking place, and that information is disseminated to outside sources. It only stirs up rumors, and that's not a good situation. Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield the floor.
Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pretty sure the inventor of the Compass didn't talk about it this much. You know, I'm on the record already, just for the record, as my feelings in this, I think I've voted on it several times. So, my motion to table was basically because I'm tired of dealing with it, my voting for the motion to table. You know, at this point, what do we even have committees for? What do we have staff for? We're just going to meddle in every single thing that goes on on the planet? We've made this, the bylaws are not new. They've been out there since the very first meeting, according to Mr. Wernicke, and I believe him. This has all been done. We've talked about it till the cows came home, literally, here in about 10 minutes. And, you know, I think we've had enough. I mean, I understand the concerns, and I appreciate the commitment to open government, but I don't think there's anything not open going on here. I think there's some very clearly defined rules and regulations in the bylaws that we all have, and I appreciate people making suggestions if they want to, but however, we're not here to do that. I mean, we can make the suggestions, I guess, it's our meeting, but I mean, word, verbiage, come on, guys, it's right there. It says work sessions. It's pretty well-defined. I think that we just need to move on, you know, hopefully, let Compass do its job for a while. It hasn't gotten off the ground hardly. So, let's just move on with our lives, and I guess I don't see a reason to keep bringing this back. I understand your commitment, and I appreciate that commitment. I have no problem with that. But, I just want everybody else, let's just go on, guys. I mean, enough's enough. Thanks.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wade, it's about time you weigh in on this a little bit.
I've been waiting.
We, as a city council, because this is supposed to be a council committee, can we change the bylaws?
I would say at this point, no, because the ordinance gives them the power to set their bylaws. So, you could change the ordinance and then give them a set of bylaws. But, I think the way the ordinance is now, you'd have to change that to say the council can create bylaws, or take that out and substitute your bylaws for it.
Okay. Very, thank you. I appreciate that very much. Very happy that Mr. Wernicke brought the bylaws in tonight. I have one more question for you. If the committee violates the bylaws, what action, even though I'd be making an action against myself, because I'm on the committee, and I should have been a little more diligent about it, but if the committee violates its own bylaws?
I think it's probably up to the council to deal with that situation. Whether it comes as a complaint to you, from yourself, to the whole council. I can see a lot of different actions, I guess. You'd have to, basically, because it's a committee of the council, so the council ultimately has responsibility for that committee. If they're not doing something the way the council feels they should, whether it's bylaws, whatever, then, you know, whether it takes an ordinance change... whatever, then, you know, whether it takes an ordinance change, or a direction to them to do something, it comes back to council, I think. Ultimately, it's with all of you.
That was a long, roundabout way to explain it, but I appreciate that, Wade.
And like I said, Pete, thank you very much for bringing this forward, but just looking at the first page, I see one item that we, as a committee, violated. Since I've been kinda circumvented on this committee lately, I didn't really realize it until looking at the bylaws again, but 2.03, "Members should be given the agenda and related materials, documents pertaining to the items before the committee, three business days prior to the meeting." The committee meeting before last, when the timeline was brought forward, I was given that on the dais, not three days prior to it. So that is a definite violation of our own bylaws. And I'm just bringing this up because it seems like this committee just seems to be doing whatever it wants to be, and there's nobody that we are accountable to. And if we're gonna be doing our business in secret, and I know you hate that word, but in secret, who are we accountable to? No one. That gives this committee the option to go headhunting for department heads, for mayors, for whoever they decide to. This committee has to be accountable to someone. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Kellen a question?
You may.
Thank you. For clarification purposes, Kellen, as an auditor, even if these meetings, all of them, discussion of what you are going to audit, discussion of what you're going to investigate, discussion of your findings, discussion of work in progress, would you, as the auditor, be able to discuss these findings in an open forum?
We would poss- we would be able to discuss potential audits.
Would you be able to discuss work in progress?
No. That is a definite violation of audit standards.
Would you be able to discuss interim findings?
No.
Would you be able to discuss potential information that may be detrimental before you vetted it out?
The way our process works is that once our audit work is completed, much like an investigation conducted by a human resources department, or a risk management department, or law enforcement, once our audit work is completed, we develop draft findings and recommendations, and share those with the agencies under audit before they are made public, so that management has an opportunity to respond, clarify, for us to make corrections. That is the standard process for audit work in govern- under government audit standards. We would not be able to share preliminary findings in a public meeting with the audit committee.
So basically, I'm just trying to imagine how one of these public meetings would go over time. You would set an agenda three business days before you would get together, and your comment on the majority of the items are, "We're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it." Move to adjourn. Am I far off here?
Well, other than normal administrative business, or, you know, items of a non-audit nature, that's pretty accurate, yes.
Thank you, I yield the floor.
Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna make a couple of comments, kind of echoing what Chad has said about wasting time. I just didn't know how much sense it made to approve something that's already been approved. That's why I suggested tabling. I'm already on the record for supporting him through the, the approval of our bylaws, you know, that's, that's not been any secret. I am curious, though, Mr. Warnicki, if I may, like myself, you have been accused of something this evening. Is that something you would care to rebut?
Since this inception, we, a lot of us on the committee have been criticized, and I've even begun to look at this thing with this open, call it minute-taking and whatever. It's borderlining on harassment, okay, because it's clear what the law says. We've got the city attorney telling us what's going on. What John did tonight, well, I can understand it, John. Your, your feelings are hurt, okay? I think that it was the wrong thing for you to say, because that's only part of the story with the timeline. The document has never been released, and it will not, and I've told you again and again and again, until the entire committee agrees to it. Now, how can I post that on anything, or give it out prior to the meeting, when not only yourself, but two of the other committee members never saw it before that date either? It was an item to be brought up. Preferably, we would have liked to have done that in a work session, because it deals more not with the function of what the committee was doing in terms of Kellen's auditing, it was doing administrative tasks, which are two different things. There's also a different argument going on up here. I noticed that, Amanda, you're asking the right questions of Kellen. The problem is, what we're dealing with here with the secrecy, you're dealing with the committee. You're not dealing with Kellen. He's falling under different rules. He can't sit there and tell us a lot of what he's doing. We're trying to, we're in the position of having to sift through this, when he's getting his findings, and as he's doing his investigations, and we've got to decide what information can get out, in terms of even reporting back to you as a council. What's the status on some of these things? We just, we just gave you one last council meeting, and Kellen had to be very careful, it was an ongoing audit. We've started another one, okay? Just, matter of fact, he started it today. What's the status of that? We don't even know. We're dealing with this information, and it's very difficult, because this is unprecedented in what we're doing with Compass. I read the laws, and, and it's funny that it comes up about things like executive sessions. It's really funny with the open meetings laws, and how we're trying to define ourselves as a committee. Again, how the committee's defining itself versus how the auditor is defined, it's two different things. As the committee, we're just a recommending body. We have no authority. And specifically, what the state refers to is sovereign authority. We can't force our opinions or findings upon anybody. All we do is report, and that's the big black hole in the state law. It's about where does that fall, in terms of the openness of the meetings, the record-keeping, all of it? That's what we've been asking for, where we've been trying to find that line. We don't need to be attacked, whether it's in this council, whether it's out in another meeting somewhere, or just in general discussions, and people saying that, hey, we're having secret meetings. That really implies, like, we're doing something wrong. And several times tonight, statements like that have been made up there. And, you know, it's, that's like a cheap shot. That's, that's just being childish. We're all grownups here. I've said it again, and I'll keep saying it, we've been told what this, the law means, and what, how we're supposed to apply it. Now, if we're doing it wrong, I will be the first person to admit it, but nobody, nobody is telling us, is this correct? Everybody's throwing back at us, hey, uh, guys, you know, you gotta keep minutes, or why aren't you doing this? Or why aren't you having open meetings? So we get verbiage problems. Of course we get verbiage problems. It's gonna happen. But let's work through it. This is getting really tiring. All we wanna do is do our jobs. And our jobs are to watch over the two auditors, give you, and go back to the council, the findings, recommendations for some of the audit topics, and that's basically it.
Pete, I'm gonna ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
I'll stop right there.
Thank you, Mr. Warnicki, I appreciate that. You know, and I just wanna make another comment about openness. We had a lot of very positive, dynamic dialogue in the steering committee, I mean, from inception of this project to where we're at right now, in the formation of the committee, about, even though the law does not require us to conduct our business out in the open, we decided to do that. We decided that we wanted the public involved to the greatest extent possible. The ordinance and the bylaws reflect that, and, you know, like Chairman Warnicki, and like the other members of the committee, I would sure like that opportunity to go through the first full program of Compass, to see where are the glitches? You know, we, we've caught a few with Kellen Kelly's expertise on the front end of this ordinance, that maybe we missed the mark a little bit in creating that. We've since revised that, and, but to see really, you know, it's, get, get through this process before we are condemning anything that the committee's doing. And I think with having two council representatives on that committee, we're making sure that these committee members can't go headhunting, I think, as it was referred to tonight. And likewise, you know, the, the, the citizens at large far outnumber the council, so they, you know, this is the way that you, the people, get to take a look at what is truly going on in your city government. And from our research, we think this is the, the way that it is going to work the best. Again, through that first year, we might, we might learn otherwise, and we're willing to reassess then, but what, but, but midstream, I think, is premature. I would like the conversations to start as well, so we can get on with the work, and I will yield. Thank you.
Bonnie Peterson.
I would like to make a motion to send this back to legal and finance, and-
Do we have a motion to send this back to legal and finance? Or we have a second?
I was just gonna leave it, that is my motion to le- substitute motion, to just send it back to legal and finance, and-
Do we have a second?
I won't be here in two weeks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this back to the next week's legal and finance meeting.
And, and what I would like to do in that, in that timeframe, is to come up with the, narrow down the discussion. We've talked, Jerry had offered about what's okay in executive session. Joel has said that the needs of what needs to be private for Compass is different than the needs of executive session as it's currently defined. So we need to work on trying to streamline the language so that it meets the Compass needs, and hopefully, the council needs. I was a little concerned with Mr. Roberts' comments when he had, I don't know if, he sounded like he himself didn't know what was going on in, in Compass, so that, I mean, I don't know, it might just been my read on what he was saying, but that was concerning to me, 'cause, and he did point out of something that didn't happen, like the notice, the three-day notice, you know, that we didn't get three days' notice, and that's a violation of the rules. But also, like tonight, and our, we should not, Joel said repeatedly, we should not walk on items onto this agenda because it has not gone through three days' notice. So we routinely violate, you know, the official rules, because we retune, whenever Joel hears when that we're gonna walk on something, he gets excited. He's trying to rein us in a little bit. So anyway, what I'm just saying is that, yes, ideally, we do everything that's on paper, but sometimes we, you know, and there's no ill intention of walking on, you know, something or something came up. It's not like we're being devious, it's just that we do violate written rules. I also wanna thank the mayor for being supportive of Compass. He really helped to bring Compass forward and to get it to this point. And I think what we're looking at is where practicality and openness collide. Earlier, an alderman mentioned that we didn't wanna vote, take a vote on openness, and I have no problem taking a vote on openness, because we all want things to be as open as possible. But at the same time, all of the city's business cannot be conducted out in the open. If it could, like, for instance, every Monday, unless it's a holiday and we go to Tuesday morning, over in the caucus room, four, four of us council members and almost all the department heads are in a meeting with the mayor. Well, if we're really into openness, then why don't we put that on camera, so everyone can see what we're doing? While a lot of it is just saying, okay, well, this issue's come up, this person wants to table this, you know, we've heard this is a problem, we're, you know, so we're trying to negotiate so that when we get here, things run smoothly. We're not doing any devious business, city business. And likewise, if we wanna openness, then why don't we put a camera in the mayor's office? You know, every once in a while, his wife and kids will drop in, and that'll be very entertaining, you know, we can see how long he kisses her, or whatever. You know, so it's like, we have to find where openness and practicality intersect, so that we can do the people's business and be as open as we can. So anyway, I hope that we can get support to move this into another day, and, but we will be bringing it back with more concise language, and hopefully, at that time, we can take an up and down vote. I don't have a problem with an up and down vote, because I think we all have to decide where the practicality is of openness and the, you know, and practicality where they collide. So, thank you.
Jerry.
I have no problem with us going back to legal and finance. I hand this off to Councilwoman Doyle as our representative to legal and finance. Public, that's my motion or my recommendation, how we word the bylaws, since we don't write the bylaws. Go get 'em, guys. Get her done. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to continue to next week's legal and finance meeting? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Do we have any noes? One noe from John Roberts.
Mayor, I'd like to make a, make a recess.
I would rather not. I think we're getting close to the end, but if you wanna offer a motion, okay, I won't fight it. All right, we have a motion and a second, and a third. All in favor of taking a 10-minute recess, please say aye.
Aye. I support the smokers.
Okay.
It's not bad.
The meeting, we are now on item 120A. Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I wanted to, I wrote down a few thoughts on this, and I just wanted to, again, apologize to my colleagues, but I'm definitely not going to wait until the bill list at the end of the meeting to walk something on. So that's why I wanted to bring it before the meeting, so that some people can gather their thoughts a little bit about it, and I know that this is something we've spoke about before, so I'm not afraid of the fact that everybody will be able to weigh in on this subject even tonight, if they need to be, so. But I just wanted to add this item, because I strongly support the code of conduct. As being one of the authors of the original ordinance, and bringing it up through legal and finance, I believe there's a need for elected officials- elected officials to govern themselves. I believe we should at least discuss the potential for elected officials, where they might possibly use the code of conduct as a vehicle to personally attack fellow council members that they may disagree with or personally dislike. And on that note, not that this has ever happened, or will happen, that was supposed to be a joke, I appreciate that, sir. With this in mind, I believe there should be some consequence or consequences where what may be proven through the investigation process, which is part of the, the code of conduct, that those, some certain items may be proven to be false or untrue complaints and allegations indirectly or directly by other council members. One potential consequence could be the required reimbursement of legal fees to the falsely accused council member by another council member. This discussion is not about what has previously occurred. It is about improving the code for the future. I am hopeful that one of my colleagues will make a motion to send this item back to Legal and Finance for further discussion and possible amendments to the current elected official's code of conduct. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion or a motion? Any discussion or a motion? Bonnie.
Mr. Laurenti, can I, could you restate what your desires are, please, what your motion is?
Well, primarily that we, and then really, this was, like I said, added as an item of discussion, but what's important to me is that we look at the potential, obviously, that the code of conduct could be abused. And I think that it can very well easily be abused, because the language is very broad. And that, for very good reasons, the language is broad, but also, that's a, there's a downside to that. And what's important here is that we discuss possible amendments, especially where other council members may be involved in bringing forward some formal complaints. If that's found through the investigation process, not just finger pointing, but because the investigation process is part of the elected official's code of conduct, if it's found that other elected officials were involved in some way, shape, or form, and the accused is also a council member, and that council member has had to, to pay legal fees because of what's occurred, I think it's more than right that that council member who was part of those false allegations, those untrue allegations, those complaints, be responsible for that other council member's legal fees. And I think we need to do this, because there needs to be accountability, that we're not using this as a political, personal attack. And I would say that all of us would agree to the words I'm saying, and to me, it would be a no-brainer that we could amend or add additional amendments to safeguard council members. I think it's extremely important.
Bonnie.
Okay, I would be amenable. I think the authors of the original code of conduct, I don't know, it was you and Roberts and Sasso. Bill, were you in on that original code? Okay.
Actually, not on the original code, but on the procedures.
And George Mason.
As far as, you know, we reevaluated that, so.
You know, I think it'd probably be most appropriate for you all to come back with revisions that you're considering. I know that I will not be considering anything retroactively. I also will say that, just because a council person is, you know, like I said, I don't even think, one, I think we even need to discuss, do we even need a code of conduct? Because if you think, if there's any kind of violation for you, misbehaving, that the city is gonna have to come up with money to pay for your right to misbehave, I don't think that's appropriate. Also, that, I don't see if you're being, if your peers are talking to you about your behavior, I don't see how that warrants an attorney. Now, if your peers are taking some kind of action against you or something, maybe that would. But when you're just being talked about your behavior, I don't see why you need an attorney. I mean, do you need an attorney when your wife talks to you about your behavior? Do you need an attorney when your boss talks to you about your behavior? I don't see the need for this escalation of things. But I would suggest, I have, I can't make a motion, but I would say, you know, look at it, look and see what you think, and bring back something, you know, in a month or two. I would wait until you know more about what's going on, because that, because that has opened my eyes up to things, like, why do go first to an investigation? Why don't we just bring it immediately to your peers and see if an investigation is warranted? So, I would encourage you to take your time on it, but I'll be willing to look at recommendations that you might have. Thanks.
Ron Sasso.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to send the code of conduct and the procedures for the code of conduct to Legal and Finance for discussion.
Do we have a second? We have a motion by Sasso and a second by Laurenti to take this back to Legal and Finance.
And if I, if I may elaborate a little bit, Mayor, thank you. This, this is something that, as a, several of us were involved with reviewing the code of conduct. We kicked around various changes. In the past, we looked at this. We came up with revising procedures. And just like anything, I think it's something that there is always room for improvement. There are things that we didn't fully agree on previously, and I think it's, I think it's worthwhile revisiting this, the code itself. There is state statute that does say we do police our own, however, the code of conduct is probably more focused, and yet, a lot of, there are a lot of ambiguity, there's a lot of ambiguity within that. And I think that's one of the problems, and we might be better off with a, something of the nature of a, and I'm, I'm at a loss for the, the correct word that I'm looking for, but basically looking at standards of what actually best practices, where this is what we shoot for as elected officials, and more than likely, no one is going to achieve them, but at the same time, that's what we shoot for. And that's just some of my thoughts on that. So, anyway, thank you all, yield.
Jerry Wright.
I want to raise a question and point of order, because this appears to be committee work, and I think we're at council meeting. I suggest that we handle it there and move on.
The motion is to take it back to committee.
Call the question.
Can't do that, since you've already spoken.
Someone else do it for me.
We'll go to John Roberts. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to ask Mr. Laurenti a question. Council, Council President Doyle asked, not Doyle, I'm sorry, Peterson. It's been a long night. I'm ready for bed. She asked about retroactive. You were not considering anything retroactive. This has nothing to do with the mayor, with everything that happened two years ago?
Well, since I wrote it this down, let me just reiterate it, because this discussion is not about what has previously occurred. It is about improving the code for the future. That was my exact words. I can only say they were exact, because I'm reading what I wrote down.
And I know you don't do that very often, so...
Sure don't. I like to speak off the cuff. Sometimes that can be detrimental.
Okay, now I'm done with, I'm done with you. Okay. Way to have one question for you, because it was brought up by, by Ron, that we have the right to police our own through, through state statute. But I believe under state statute, it just says that we have the right, if it's bribery or misconduct, or...
If you're convicted of bribery, you vacate your office. I don't have it in front of me, but I think it says something to the effect that you can expel a member for disorderly conduct, something to that effect.
And I think those are the only two that the state, or under state law, that we can police our own. The code of conduct has just been an add-on to that, which is very, very subject to interpretation. I think that, and I don't want to put words in my colleague Ron's mouth over here, but I think he was talking more or less about...
I have plenty. I don't need any more.
One at a time, please.
More or less about a code of ethics, I think is what Ron was talking about. And I think that, I think it's about time we get away from the code of conduct and we go to a code of ethics. Code of conduct is great, except for the fact that it can be used to, to take people down, to, and I don't want to use the word censor, or censor, or whatever word you want to use, but it can be used that way.
Censor.
Censor. Sense, yeah, there is, there is, but it's been used both ways. So, anyway, I, I think it's something we need revisited. I'm glad it's going there. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Motion on the floor is to continue this to the next Legal and Finance meeting. Any further discussion on the motion to continue? Bonnie?
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we continue this for six weeks and allow the people with the concerns to work with Joel to bring something forward, because otherwise, we'll just kind of kick it around in Legal and Finance. I think we need to have some ideas of, oh, I'm sorry, I was supposed to wait for a second.
We have a motion and we have a second by Doyle to continue this for six weeks, so that would be roughly the first Legal and Finance meeting in February.
Call the question.
Did I get that right?
Call the question.
Oh, January.
Okay, thank you, Richie.
Let's clarify, because I got, was it, first, first Legal and Finance meeting in January? That'd be about a month? Yeah, that's, that'd be about right, after the holidays.
The reason I want this, because if you bring it to Legal and Finance next week, I don't think that gives you enough time to work with the attorney on the issues that you have, because Mr. Roberts is talking about code of ethics, you know, to the proper language. And I think we need to, since you know more what your concerns are, if you can bring those concerns, I think that would be much more helpful to us, seeing how the rest, you know, the, there's several of you that have concerns about it, and so I think that would be better if we gave you time to work with the attorney, so he could say, well, you know, what about this, what about that, the language, and then bring something back to us. That would be my suggestion, so I hope you'll support it. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to take this to the January, is it January 2? January 16, January 16, Legal and Finance meeting. I'd like to make a comment if I can. I hadn't really planned on weighing, weighing in on this, but listening to, listening to this discussion, and also listening to some other comments that were made earlier tonight, I heard, in the discussion on the previous item, I heard someone say, who is the, the chairman of one of the most important and powerful committees in city government, expressed concern about council members harassing him and the members of the Compass Committee for asking questions. That's a code word for me, when someone throws out the word harassment. You know what? There's been a lot of votes here over the last year and a half, being mayor, and actually, the last nine years or so of being involved in city government, a lot of votes, a number of votes, that haven't gone my way. A lot more votes have gone my way than haven't gone my way, but there's been a number of important votes, including a vote earlier tonight, that didn't, that didn't go my way. But you know what? Each and every one of you have the right to have your opinion. You have the right to ask questions. You have the right to a robust debate. And it used to be that we would censor, censure, whatever, whatever you call it, council members for asking questions. But we must value this robust debate. We must value it. We must embrace it. We must be willing to agree to disagree. And sometimes, we're even going to be just a little bit disagreeable. But you know what? Overall, this, this council functions pretty well. We've done a lot of amazing things in the last year and, year and a half, and I, I am, I do not want to, I do, I mean, and, and people have the right to say that they feel that they're being harassed, but I, I think we need to be very careful about where we're going, when, when we have, we have council members or committee members or whoever that are feeling harassed, because other council members are asking questions. It used to be, at one point, I felt like I was the only council member asking questions, and I felt like I was twisting in the wind. Now we have a whole crop of new council members, all 10 of you, that are willing to ask questions. You're willing to disagree with me. You're willing to call me up on the phone and say, Sam, I think you're wrong. And, and, you know what? I appreciate that. Sometimes I don't always like it, but I like the fact that we have a robust debate. We live in the most, we live in the most exciting system in the world. It's messy, but it's beautiful. And I do, I do not want us to get into a situation where we are, we are defined as asking questions and asking for openness as harassment. That concerns me. It's happened before, and I don't think it should happen again. And no, Steve, I don't, I don't, I don't know exactly where you're going with this. I do not want to reopen the, the whole, the whole thing that happened two and a half years ago. I want that can of worms to say, to stay as sealed as possible. There was concern during the code of conduct discussions and revisions earlier this year, that somehow it would be used to undo the, 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 the censure and, and all of that. You know what? I don't want to, to do that. I think that that should stay on the record. The taxpayers paid good money for it. I think it should stay on the record, not just as a reminder of how vicious and mean-spirited the good old boys can be, but as a reminder of how important it is to never, ever give up, and to not be a victim, and to not allow you to just give up, people, not, not to just give up because someone's attacking you. So, thank you very much for the discussion. Any further comments? Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. Does that mean you'll still take my collect calls when I call you?
You can call me anytime.
Mayor, on a serious note, I'm just, just kind of concerned about, in the contracts that I've been working with and the discussions, and I like what John is suggesting is about the code of ethics, rather than just being in a code of conduct. But there has to be some, Ron used the word ambiguity. That isn't quite right, exactly, but, but essentially, you need a little bit of latitude in, in some of these areas, so, so that some finer points can be addressed during that time. So, whatever direction we're going on this, I hope we have some more opportunity to discuss this. But Mayor, please take, continue taking my collect calls. Thank you.
Thank you, Richie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item's continued until January 16, Legal and Finance. 120B, and this is on RFD TV. I think he may have, is he still here?
I would suggest, they bring that back to us at a committee level, we'll talk about it.
Let's continue this to Legal and Finance, please. We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Lewis.
I'll second it.
Okay. To continue this to Legal and Finance. Pauline, do, are you, are you the one that's involved in the regulating of, or the franchise fee? I mean, this question comes up very rarely, of, of the city's regulation of franchises, but would, would you look into that between now and Legal and Finance? Because it seems like the last time this came up, it was a finance issue.
Yeah, we have, we have an ordinance that regulates cable franchises. It's, it's pretty much limited to rates, if they want to do rate increases. And the ordinance is sort of a, a baseline for entering into a franchise agreement, which, they're usually pretty long-term, like 20-year agreements. So, I think there is an agreement on file with, I don't know if it's Nology or Prairie Wave, or what entity it was when it entered into the agreement, but we can pull that out and have a look at it.
Will you pull that out and link it to the agenda, and if you could provide us an opinion? Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know, I guess I appreciate the petitioner, or the, whatever, what I call them. I don't know, I guess I appreciate the petitioner or the, whatever you want to call them, bringing forth a concern and their desire to have this, you know, put back on Nology, but I don't think it's really the city's job to go around regulating free enterprise and tell them who they have to put on their cable channels. If the, if the customers want to step up and make enough noise about it, that's by all means they can do that, but I don't think as a city we need to be taking that position. I don't think we need to tell people, any more than we need to tell NBC they can't put, take Friends off the air, or whatever, so I just don't see any reason for us to even get involved in this fight. Thank you.
We have a motion to take this to legal and finance, and there'll be more information gathering between now and then. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no from Chad Lewis. Item 121. Jerry, was this your item? This is environmental education regional grant application.
Yes, it is, thank you. We are applying for a grant through the EPA. One of the components of the citizen campus out at the landfill is going to be an education on reuse and recycling, and this will help us to equip some of the, the work that we're doing with the citizen campus.
Okay. We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Peterson for approval. Any discussion? Jerry?
What are you asking for in your grant? What's it for? Excuse me, is it equipment, labor?
It'd be equipment, which will be utilized in one of the, the buildings out at the citizen campus.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on public hearing items 122 through 132. We have a motion to open public comment.
Second.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do I have any speaker request forms on 122 to 132? Looks like we have one for 131.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you need more comfortable seats down here. As you know, I represent efforts and the, and the owners who are here with me this evening, and we were prepared to make some comments, and I think they put in speaker request forms as well. At this time, I'm asking for, I guess, your permission, if you will, or your non-opposition to our withdrawing the application for renewal of the wine license. As you know, we have claims pending in court that may determine the outcome on that issue, and so we believe it's in the best interest of everybody at this time to not pursue that, but we would like to make that withdrawal, and it's my understanding and the assurance I've received, is that we can withdraw that application without prejudice or penalty to filing a new application in the future at such time as that is appropriate, depending on the outcome of those claims. So, I know before we've asked for right to withdraw an application before, and that the council went ahead and took up the matter, and so on and so forth, so, on the, basically on the condition that, that there's no opposition to our withdrawal at this time, then we will defer our comments, and hopefully that's the action the council will take.
Would you not have any additional speaker request forms on items 122 to 132? Did I miss anyone? Okay. Seeing, seeing none, do we have a motion to close public comment?
No.
Any public, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anyone like to remove items 120, any items from 122 to 132? We're going, we're going to remove 131. Any other items?
Remove 129?
Any other items? Pauline, any other items? Okay. Chad, you have a light on? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the balance of 123 to 132 without 129 and 131?
So, move.
Motion by Scott, and a second by? Oh, one, okay, so that includes 122 to 132 without 129 and 131.
So, move. Second.
We have a motion by Peterson, second by Doyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 129, this is Ugly Inc., doing business as Bud Uglies, 321 Seventh Street, for retail on-sale liquor license.
Aye.
And we'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the request of the petitioner, I'd like to move to continue this item until the second meeting in January. Is council meeting in January?
We have a motion by Lewis and a second, a second by Doyle to continue this, the second city council meeting in January. Any discussion on this?
I guess I would ask the city attorney's office if they will still be able to operate from December 31st until the date of the meeting? And do they realize this as the applicant?
Can I make, is it okay if I change it to the second meeting in December, then? Okay. Just, did I amend my motion to, or change my motion to?
It's okay with a seconder.
Seconder, okay.
And it's okay with a seconder, continue this for two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks, excuse me.
Any further discussion on that? Motion is to continue 129 for two weeks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 131, Chief Allender, would you offer your opinion on the request to withdraw?
I think it's a good, valid request, and I recommend the council agree with it.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
By Doyle, second by Peterson, to allow the applicant to withdraw the, the request.
With no prejudice.
Without prejudice. And that's okay with a seconder? That's your understanding?
Could someone tell me what no prejudice means? We're just.
It means, it means they can re, it means they can reapply.
Right, we're not, we're not denying it. Okay, okay, thanks, yeah.
It's not being denied. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 130, 133, bill list.
I do have two additions to the bill list. One is for Hills Materials in the amount of $2,396, and one is to Stanley Johnson Concrete Contractor for $2,801.40 for a grand total of $7,171,710.93.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Have a good night, everyone.